Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Before we begin this evening, I would like you to join me in a moment of silence in honor of Councilmember Coke's husband Cory, who passed away on April 1st. Thank you. Our thoughts and our condolences are with Councilmember Coke and her family during this time. If you please join me in invocation by Michael Gagnon, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with the Mighty Minions Robotics Team.
Father, I thank you. I thank you that today you have gifted us with breath in our lungs. I thank you for your love, your grace, your mercy, your gift of salvation that you present to all who believe in the Son Jesus Christ. How excellent is your name in all the earth! What is man that you are mindful of him? Lord God, how mighty is your name! Let your will be done! Let man seek to do your will, that is, that everyone sees the Son and believes in him that they may have everlasting life, and raise them up on the last day. Not unto us, O Lord, but to your name give glory because of your mercy and truth. May man repent, confess his sins, tear down his idols of silver and gold, the work of men's hands; for they have mouths but do not speak, eyes but do not see, ears but do not hear, noses but do not smell, hands but do not handle. You are the truth. You are the true and living God. We spend money for what is not bread, and our wages for what does not satisfy. May we incline our ear and come to you. Let your Spirit fill this place, that we may glorify your name here today. I come to you by the only way, the name of your only begotten Son, Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Molly, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, please just make your way to the microphone.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Molly Hooks. I'm the head coach of the Mighty Minions. This is our sixth year as a competitive robotics team. They range from fifth grade to eighth grade, and it's one of their first inspires program. And the biggest thing is, First is not just about robots. It's basically about the hardest fun you're ever going to have. These kids work hard. I'm extremely proud of what they have done this season and in the past seasons. And one statistic I did want to pass on, that for any child that spends one year, one year in the First Robotics Program, whatever their age, they have a 50% higher of ending up in a STEM career when they go and pass high school. So I just, it was a long-term study that just came out, and I thought that was a phenomenal statistic to pass on of what an impact this program makes on everyone, including myself, the volunteers, and parents, and most of all, the kids. So, and we like to have a lot of minion fun. Thank you.
Molly, do we have, is everyone here right now? Is everyone here?
Yes, we all made it.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. All right.
Fellow Mayor Sheehy and City Council Members, we are the Mighty Minions Robotics Team. I'm Lyric.
I'm September.
I'm Viviana.
I'm Vinnie.
And I'm Jacob.
We placed third at Arizona State First Robotics Championship this past January out of 72 teams, and now we're heading to a world tournament in Massachusetts this June.
Our team would love to share with everyone here today about who we are and what we do at our First Lego League competitions. There are four parts we are judged or scored on during the event.
The first and most important part of all activities, including competition, is demonstrating at all times the first core values.
Discovery.
Innovation.
Impact.
Inclusion.
Teamwork.
Fun.
Gracious professionalism.
And co-pretition.
But boy, let's get this part, uh... But boy, let's... Next up is the robot game.
This is Bob, our robot. He has an efficient design for using attachments and very stable as he moves around the robot game board.
We program our robot to complete as many missions on the game board as possible to earn points. We only have two and a half minutes to get them done.
We build attachments that Bob uses during the robot game to complete the submerged
Next up is the robot design speech. We present to the judges about, all about Bob. We share our robot mission strategy, planning, attachment idea, and development, our code, our code we wrote to execute the missions and more. We also have, ah, we also have to answer a lot of questions.
The final part of our competition is the innovation project. This season's theme is how we can help our oceans. As a team, we have to identify a problem and a solution related to the theme. At competition, we present our research project to the judges.
Our team wanted to help with the ocean pollution. Our team research-led focus on ghost gear.
Ghost gear is any human-made device to catch aquatic animals that are abandoned, lost, or discarded in our oceans. We discovered there's between 500,000 to 1 million tons of fishing gear abandoned in the ocean each year.
Our problem is a form of ghost gear, fish hooks that are abandoned along our coastlines that can damage aquatic environments and marine animals.
Just because they're small doesn't mean they're not a mighty problem. There's an estimate of 14 billion fish hooks lost each year.
Our research, our research shows that abandoned fish hooks can cause problems such as infections which can lead to a slow and painful death to marine animals.
Harm people and animals along our shorelines.
Interfere with feeding abilities.
Damage habitats.
Rust and reduces oxygen.
Yikes, that's not good.
Our solution is an automated robot that uses magnets on a conveyor belt to pick up and collect abandoned fish hooks and other ferrous materials along our coastlines.
We designed our robot to move along the shoreline using all-wheel drive and tractor style, tractor-style tires. It has a moving conveyor belt with magnets in the central body to pick up fish hooks and then deposits them in a storage unit. Oops, our robot needs a name.
The Mighty Mobile.
Minions on the loose. Thank goodness it was not the purple minions. We went on an inspiring field trip to our local lake to test our prototype. We tested three types of magnets on our Mighty Mobile to see how each worked on land, rock, fresh, and saltwater.
We had fun testing our prototype. We observed...
Flat, solid magnets work best.
Our robot needs to move slowly to grab hooks that may be buried or, buried or under rocks.
We observed no difference between freshwater or saltwater.
Epoxy neodymium magnets, epoxy neodymium magnets scratch easily, and plastic neodymium coatings can get damaged.
Ceramic cobalt turned out to be our best option because it's the most resistant to corrosion and less affected by temperature ranges.
Booyah, we made an impact to our community with our prototype. We picked up fish hooks and metals that have been rusting in our lake.
We will proudly represent Arizona and our hometown, Lake Havasu City, in the world tournament in Massachusetts.
On behalf of the Mighty Minions, thank you Mayor Sheehy and City Council Members. We truly appreciate your time and continued support.
Thank you. If you please stay where you're at now, I'm going to come around and we're going to do a proclamation. All right, you want to join me up here? We're so proud of you Mighty Minions. Thank you so much. Great, great job. So in honor of all your hard work and your upcoming nationals, which we are so proud for you to represent Lake Havasu City in Massachusetts, we're offering a proclamation from my office naming Robotics Week: Welcome to the Future, honoring our Mighty Minions April 5th through the 13th of 2025. Whereas in May of 2009, leading universities and companies appealed to the Congressional Caucus on Robotics to create a national roadmap for robotics technology. On March 9th, 2010, the U.S. House of Representatives passed a resolution officially designating a full week in April as National Robotics Week. And whereas the mission of National Robotics Week, also known as RoboWeek, is to inspire students in robotics and STEM-related fields, and to share the excitement of robotics with audiences of all ages. And whereas the mission of National Robotics Week, also known as RoboWeek, is to inspire those students of all ages to pursue careers in robotics and other science, technology, engineering, and math fields. And whereas the mission of First is to provide life-changing robotics programs that give young people the skills, confidence, and resilience to build a better world. And whereas First's vision is to transform our culture by creating a world where science and technology are celebrated, and where young people dream of becoming science and technology leaders. And whereas we have the distinct privilege of having the Mighty Minions Robotics Team, ambassadors of First from Lake Havasu City dedicated to making our community a better place to live with their submerged innovation project, the Mighty Mobile, a robot designed to clean materials from ocean and lake shorelines. Jacob, Lyric, September, Viviana, and volunteer coaches Molly and Mark Hooks. Now therefore, I Cal Sheehy, the mayor of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through April 13th, 2025 is Robotics Week: Welcome to the Future, honoring our Mighty Minions, and urge all citizens to recognize the far-reaching contributions engineers have made, as well as acknowledge the tremendous impact they continue to have on our lives. Congratulations, students, and we wish you all of the best of luck in Massachusetts. I'd like to have my colleagues join me. We'll take a photo with the proclamation. My fellow council members would come down. Oh, and here's Bob. Who's that? Who has Bob? Yeah. Perfect. I'm going to separate, you sure have, I'm going to jump right in here. Would you, you got two? Good? Congratulations again. Great job.
I just wanted to say one more thing about my team, who I'm very proud of. They placed third out of over 300 teams in the state of Arizona. So, and now they'll be going to a world tournament, which is called the Waffle. The trophies are actually Lego waffles, which are really cool. And they'll be competing against 108 teams from about 40 different countries. So this is truly a once-in-a-lifetime experience for them. They'll be on a college campus, they get to make new friends. We still have pen pals from past years. So I just couldn't be prouder. And when they're there, they're very, very proud to represent our city and our state. And they have done a wonderful ambassadorship job over the years. And I just, I would like to express how proud I am of them, not just their skills, their STEM work, but the kind of human beings they are, how they treat people, and how they are recognized by their peer group as being leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to item four on our agenda, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell. Here. Jenny Coke. Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. We are ready to vote. Councilmember Diaz? Thank you. Councilmember Coke? She's not there.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, which is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, this item is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following listing is of current and upcoming vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, one alternate member. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, three regular members. Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members, one alternate member. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, local boards, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and we also have applications available on the city's website. The deadline to submit an application for both current and upcoming vacancies is 5:00 PM on Friday, May 30th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Councilmember Campbell? Yes.
Why is there so many openings right now? Are these just terming out, or are people resigned?
Yes, correct. They're terming out. We have current members whose terms are ending, so we're announcing those, those upcoming vacancies as well as the current vacancies. Welcome.
Vacancies correspond with our fiscal year, so we prepare an order for July 1 start date. All right, item 6.2 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I was the chair this evening. On March 15th, Mayor proclaimed Don Knoll Day, honoring his 90th birthday and a lifelong dedication to Lake Havasu City. In 1967, Don and his wife Janet left Sturgis, Michigan, to help build this city, answering Robert P. McCulloch's visionary call. From construction in the city's early days to his role in the postal service, Don became a beloved and familiar face in our community. We extend our deepest appreciation for his service to our country, his contributions, and his unwavering friendship to Lake Havasu City. Mayor Euan Konstantberger, Cameron Moses, and David Diaz joined our partners at the Lake Havasu City Chamber of Commerce for the 2025 National Civics Week in partnership with the Civic Trust of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation. This initiative encourages middle schoolers to engage in civics and contribute to their communities. Students submitted essays on improving their communities with the top 20 competing in a live civics challenge. Congratulations. Goes out to Hannah Boo, who took first place, Neela Cox, second place, and Corbin Lowry for third place, who now advanced to the state competition with a chance to move on to the Nationals in Washington, D.C. Pictured there on the left, of course, is Councilmember and emcee Karen Moses, shown asking an interview question. And on the right, from left to right, is Councilmember David Diaz, who served as a judge, Jamie Festa Dagel was a speaker, Konstantberger Cameron Moses, Greenie Martacho was a judge, John Warren was a judge, and of course Andrea Hallert, who is the president and CEO of the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce. Lake Havasu City employees teamed up with the employees with Republic Services to do our part in cleaning up a section of State Route 95 as part of the citywide cleanup effort. This partnership highlights our shared commitment to keeping our community clean and beautiful. As a friendly reminder, please make sure you're covering your loads when you're heading to the landfill, and of course, never throw litter out of the vehicle. This simple step, or these simple steps, goes a long ways in preventing litter along our highways. And thank you to our community engagement officer Jerry Bracamonte for courting this event. Lake Havasu City proudly honored and welcomed home our Vietnam War veterans during a special event at the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds in Sarah Park. Organized through the collaboration of numerous local organizations and the Vietnam Veterans Committee, the event brought the community together in a meaningful show of gratitude. Among those in attendance were Mayor Cal Sheehy, Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn, councilmembers Nancy Campbell and David Diaz, and we had Supervisor Sonny Borelli join us, along with city staff and lots and lots of members of the community. It was a powerful display of unity and respect for our Vietnam veterans' service and sacrifice. Again, welcome home. Mayor, you attended the Heidi Edwards Cooking for Cancer Foundation fundraiser and proclaimed March 27th as Heidi Edwards Cooking for Cancer Foundation Day. Founded in 2010 by Heidi, the foundation provides short-term financial assistance to cancer patients for essential needs. After Heidi's passing in 2012, her mother Lisa Turner and volunteers continued her legacy, offering hope and relief through the community fundraisers. Lake Havasu City is proud to support their impact. And then Mayor, on March 28th, 2025, you proclaimed Teen Challenge of Arizona, celebrating 60 years in Lake Havasu City Day. Teen Challenge has played a vital role in combating drugs and alcohol abuse with an outstanding 80% success rate in helping individuals reclaim their lives. The organization continues to bring hope and healing to families through its life-changing recovery programs. Mayor Sheehy and Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn were in attendance to honor the Teen Challenge's profound impact on the community, as well as Mojave County. And lastly, Mayor proclaimed April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lake Havasu City, and lit the Lennon Bridge blue to raise awareness. He was joined by Vice Mayor Michelle Lynn, the LHCPD, Victims Advocacy, Haven Center, and DCS to promote child safety and well-being. Pitwheels were used to symbolize the hope for all children to grow up in a safe and supportive environment. Members of the City Council toured some of our infrastructure earlier today. Mayor Sheehy and Councilmember Cameron Moses were provided a guided tour, thanks to our wastewater superintendent, Thelac Fernando. I think we all learned a lot today. Public Works gave us a behind-the-scenes scene, look at the North wastewater treatment plant, our Vado wells in that area, as well as the Influent Pump Station. It's truly eye-opening to see the complexity and care that goes into managing our water and wastewater infrastructure, delivering the services we often don't think about but rely on every single day. Huge thanks to the dedicated team who operate these essential systems for Lake Havasu City. We are incredibly grateful to the Lennon Bridge Rotary Club for their generous donation of $33,160 to support youth programs in our community. This contribution will make a significant impact, helping to provide valuable opportunities and resources for our young people. Thank you to the Rotary Club for their continued commitment to bringing a brighter future for our youth. And a reminder that the Parks and Recreation Department, in partnership with the Mojave County Master Gardeners, is hosting an extra special event on Saturday, April 19th. It'll take place at the Aquatic Center. Kids ages 3 to 12 are invited to celebrate spring by meeting with the Easter Bunny. There'll be egg coloring and potting plants. The cost is $5, and space is limited, so make sure you register. You can check that out on the city's website. Don't miss out, miss out on this fun-filled spring celebration. And lastly, it's with a heavy heart, Lake Havasu City extends its deepest condolences to Councilmember Jenny Coke, Taylor Coke, and the family. Cory Coke was a valuable member of our Development Services Department and part of our city team, and he'll be deeply missed. Cory was an amazing man, an exemplary city employee. He was one of the hardest-working employees I have ever met. It was commonplace for Cory to come in on a weekend, a paid holiday even, or take home work, or take work home with him in the evenings and on the weekends. His dedication and commitment to Lake Havasu City and our residents was truly impressive. He was one of our unsung heroes. Our hearts and heavy, our hearts are heavy with sorrow over this tragic loss. Cory, we're going to miss you. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During each of our public hearings, we will have an opportunity for citizens to engage in the conversation. We ask, when we open the public hearing, if you would like to speak on that item, that you speak during that time. We will have a call to the public at the end of the meeting, but we can't have a two-way conversation during that conversation, so we encourage you to participate when we're actually having the action item in front of us. I'll go over the guidelines of the call to the public when we get to that section, but during the call to the public, there will be a time indicator on the screens throughout the room, and we ask that you just address the council. So it's a conversation that you're going to share your thoughts and concerns or viewpoints with the council directly. We'll start with item 7.1, which is Ordnance Number 25-1358, amending the Lake Havasu City Code, Section 2.56.111, Municipal Court Administrative Fee Schedule and Jail Cost Recovery to revise the court enhancement fee. Judge Colali.
Thank you. Aloha, Mayor and Council. First of all, my heartfelt love and aloha to Councilmember Coke and her family and her loss. We're back before you, two weeks later, Council, to request approval of this item. We presented it for discussion a couple of weeks ago. What we're asking is that the court enhancement fee be amended to indicate $20 instead of $10. The request is based on changes that happened at the legislature that are costing, or that are taking more money to the state that should stay here in Lake Havasu. We utilize this fund for a number of good things, including our youth court. And so in order to make sure that we have that funding, we are asking that this be changed from $10 to $20.
Thank you, Judge. Are there any questions from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
Move to adopt ordinance number 25-1358, amending City Code, Section 2.56.111.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote? Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Item 7.2 is Ordnance Number 25-1357, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 3.10, procurement, including but not limited to adding and revising definitions and exceptions and increasing thresholds. Good evening, Ms. Olson.
Good evening, everyone. This item, much as the judge's item before this, is the adoption of the ordinance that we introduced to council at the last meeting. I am prepared to go through the presentation again, if you would like. I can do maybe a little bit more expeditedly, but if you'd like me to do that, I will for those, anyone who's at home or in the audience who may not have been here for that last item.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So this item is to take a look at the possibility of increasing, amending the procurement code and increasing the council authority threshold from $50,000 to $100,000. So any purchases over $100,000 would come to council, instead of currently where everything comes to council if it's over $50,000. So why are we asking for this? There's kind of a domino effect here. If, if we can make this change at this level, we anticipate there's going to be more efficiency and productivity in the functions within each of the departments here at the city. A lot of time is spent on purchasing and procurement items. We would come to council less often, but still, we'd still be here for everything over $100,000. Probably the most efficient, or the area in which we could even improve efficiency more would be in the internal policy that staff follows. The thresholds within that policy would also increase, so we would have higher levels for what we need, higher levels before we need a, an informal quote, higher levels before we need a more formal quote, up to the solicitation for a formal bid of $100,000 or more. So staff believes that we're going to be able to provide, to perform our tasks more efficiently. We also believe that by increasing those thresholds in the, within the policy, that's going to provide opportunities for the community's smaller businesses and the local businesses to actually participate in a more easy manner than they currently participate, because they won't, it won't be a cumbersome process. It'll, sometimes it'll just be a, an email quote, a verbal quote, or something. Sometimes it'll just be an email quote, a verbal quote, or something quick that they could actually participate in. So we're hoping that they would actually increase their participation. We also took a look at what some comparable cities around Arizona are doing, and 70% of those similar cities were at the $100,000 and above threshold level. So this would put us in line with those other cities. Again, in taking a look at the procurement industry, we believe that the increase would actually reflect best practices. The policy also reflects best practices in that we will do, no matter what the process is for obtaining quotes, we'll do our due diligence in making sure that we're getting as much as we can for the dollars that we spend. Again, I wanted to talk about the comparable cities. We talked about the $100,000 threshold. There's also amendments to contracts. Currently, if a contract is changing and needs to be amended, but the increase in cost of that contract is at 5% or less, then it does not have to come to council. We're proposing that in addition to the $100,000 threshold limit for council, or I should say minimum for council authority, we're asking for the 5% on contract amendments to be increased to 10%. Now, if that 10% is more than $100,000, it would still come to council. So, or anything in between 5 and 10, it would still come to you if the dollar amount was more than $100,000. The, we spoke a little bit at the last meeting about those items that have come before council. We talked about the last 12 months that are between $50,000 and $100,000. We provided a list and we expanded that list. We worked with the city clerk's office to make sure that we were capturing everything within the legislative system. And we've, you may have noticed that the list is longer than what we had shown you or told you about before. We wanted to make sure and give you an idea of the, a better idea of the types of items and the dollar amounts of those items between $50,000 and $100,000 that have come before you, back not just this fiscal year, but actually all the way back to calendar, through calendar year 2024. So just a summary, we're recommending that the threshold for council approval increase to 100,000 or anything over 100,000 comes to council. Contract amendments threshold be for items that are greater than 10% in change of that contract, not more than 100,000. And then in addition, there's the job order contracting item, or some language in there about, the state statute sets the maximum dollar amount for job order contracts at $1 million. But there's also language there that says, however, the local government may select a higher maximum dollar amount. And so we're proposing, we have brought you, I think the last one or two have been over a million. So we're proposing that be increased to 2 million. That just sets the maximum for the job order contracts. Anything over $100,000 still will come to council within that same category. We did add some approval language for multi-year contracts, just to reflect what current practice is that had not been in writing. So for multi-year contracts, even though one year might be equivalent to less than $100,000, if the multi-year contract cumulatively is more than $100,000, the contract would come to council. We did do some administrative and kind of housekeeping cleanup with the definitions and clarification of certain items. And I think I have covered the next two items as far as amendments and job order contracts. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions from members of the council, for Ms. Olson?
Mayor. I just want to thank you for giving us that example of what you have shown us over 50,000. It was quite informative. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Marilyn?
I just have a quick question. Yeah, thank you for the list. And maybe I just need a refresher on this. Like, a couple of these items are for vehicles. So I guess my, really to be quite blunt, is this giving permission to go and purchase vehicles up to $100,000 without having to come in front of council? Because I thought we just did like a thing in our budget for a certain amount of vehicles. Didn't we just do that for a fleet? So does this, could this oversee that? And can we still go and?
If we're, if we're purchasing just one vehicle and it's under $100,000 or two vehicles, any purchase of vehicles under $100,000 would not come to council. But anything over $100,000 would, whether it was a single vehicle or piece of equipment or cumulatively. It is staff's intention to bring back the whole list as much as we can for those items covered under cooperative agreements so that you can see everything comprehensively at that time. So we would anticipate you seeing that list.
So with the cooperative, Santan Auto, we buy a lot of vehicles from. So if the very first two vehicles in a fiscal year we purchase, or first one, cumulatively is under 100,000, then we go buy the next bulk of them, it will have to come before council because cumulatively it'll be over.
So are we sticking with that bulk purchase? We're not gonna, are we sticking with that? Even what I'm trying to avoid, I'm trying to avoid, we agree that we are gonna buy all these vehicles in bulk, that now we decide, well, we still need another one over here and another one over here, and does this allow them to go and purchase that now?
No, it wouldn't allow if it's the same vendor. Since we're using cooperative purchases, generally it's gonna be the same vendor. But if we went and bought 100 cars from 100 different dealerships, all under $100,000, then yes. But that's not what we do.
I think you're still not understanding what I'm saying. So right now, didn't we just approve something just recently about, they came in front of us with a whole list of vehicles, right? And we said, okay, you can buy those for the year.
Yes.
Right? What if we decide now, well, I don't remember how many that was. Say it was 100. Now all of a sudden, the department says, well, we need another vehicle, we need another vehicle. They can go purchase that over that 100 that we?
No.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Moses? I'm sorry. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Just make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Bonnie Toy. Hi, council. Appreciate you. What Michelle just asked, I mean, what Ms. Lynn just asked, I would have to agree, I don't understand. Because, but from what I understood of what she was saying and the way I understood it, Public Works or whoever that's in charge of, asked the dude, this really tall guy, asking for all the vehicles, that you should be moving up to the front of the agenda in the future. He asked last year, or at the beginning of this year, for like 10 vehicles approximately over the whole year. So, and that was for a certain time period, and it costs more than $100,000 overall. So if I understood Michelle's question correctly, and I happen to think I understood what she was saying, is that what happens if in January of 2026, they decide that, that they decide that they need one vehicle that's under $100,000, are they coming back to you to add on to that order? Or is it, will it be a whole new order? And then they don't have to ask you for the $100,000 because one vehicle is under $100,000? That's what I think, that's what I heard, and I have to admit, I was just kind of curious of the same thing. If in two years, police officer Sterling needs five vehicles and they're all under $100,000, he's not gonna have to come back and ask you for them, correct?
No, he would have to come back. So the procurement code is in our fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. If we spend a cumulative amount over $100,000 with any vendor, it has to come back before council.
Just one vendor in the one year?
Over $100,000 with each one vendor. If it goes over that amount, no matter what purchases, it could be, it could be 10 purchases of $10,000, the next purchase would have to come before council.
So then he could ask for one extra police cruiser and not have to worry about that?
I don't understand the question in that frame, but anything over $100,000, you have to come back before council.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I have one more question. I know that we had a little bit of discussion about getting quarterly reports on any items that are over that, and that isn't in this ordinance. Is this just gonna be a verbal agreement that that's gonna happen?
It's my understanding, my recollection from our last meeting is that it's available at any time that any council member wants to request it. You can request it once a month, you can request it once a year, biannually, so that would be up to the council member that has an interest in that.
Any other questions or comments? Entertainer motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
Move to adopt ordinance number 25-1357, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 3.0, procurement.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Oh, sorry. All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote? Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7.3 is Resolution Number 25-3825, adopting the Public Education Plan for the 2026 General Plan Update. Mr. Tunneman.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Arizona state law requires the city to update its general plan every 10 years. Our last update was in 2016. On January 28th of this year, we entered into a professional service contract with Logan Simpson Design, Inc. to assist with this update. The update process has started, and one of the initial steps is creating and adopting a public education plan as required by state law. Logan Simpson is here tonight to present an overview of the update process, which includes the public education plan. I would now like to turn it over to Terry Hogan with Logan Simpson Design, Inc.
Well, thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and council. I'm so excited to be here tonight. You have a lot of incredible things going on in your city. I'm especially enamored by the Mighty Minions. I love that. I hope to do as good a job on my presentation, but Jeff will judge me later. So with that, I have a few folks I'd like to introduce. We're here to give you kind of an overview of general plan update process as well as the public education plan, which we'll ask for a motion for you on that later. We have, of course, our city team, project team with Jeff and Chris and Shelby, all of the folks that you know. We've compiled a consultant group with myself as project manager and Logan Simpson. I'm gonna invite a couple people on screen just to say a few words. Bruce Mian is our president and CEO. If we can turn on the sound just real quick on that, I'll let Bruce say just.
Check, check?
Perfect.
Good?
Yep.
All right, well, I guess it's a requirement that the CEO says something. So in addition, though, I'm also an active member of the planning team for your project. But good evening, Mayor, council and staff. My name is Bruce Mina, stated, CEO at Logan Simpson. And just a quick reminder, we're a multidisciplinary planning firm headquartered in Arizona. We're about 170 hopefully talented professionals. But we were founded in 1990, and we're dedicated to responsible change, especially in communities across the West, especially communities with a specific resort economy similar to Lake Havasu City. Simply, my role and our team's role that you see before you is to make sure that our plan aligns with community values, and you're about to talk about that, and delivers lasting benefits. We're simply excited to work with you, and thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And Mayor, if I may, in the interest of time, I'm gonna introduce the rest of our team. These are just key members of our team. We've collected some teaming members that we work with quite a bit, based upon the amount and comprehensiveness of the topics that we'll be covering. We have Kim Lee Horn here, we have Chris Joanna's here. If you could just give a wave. Public facility components of this plan. We don't have our team member for Elliot D. Pollack and company here, Rick Merritt. But he's an economist. He's working on the economic growth as well as the housing components of this plan. Myself, as a manager, project manager, working on community planning and community engagement. Our assistant project manager, Sandy Hoffman. Sandy, and we have retired Colonel Mitchell here, who is our airspace and airport compatibility professional from Peacemaker Aviation. So with that, we'll go ahead and get into our presentation. Hopefully, I can work the clicker. We'll see. Okay, perfect. All right, team members. Okay, so Mayor, tonight, we'd like to give an overview of what is a general plan for the purposes. We know many of you were involved in the updates and are probably very familiar with general plan. For the purposes of the public, we're gonna talk about what is a general plan at a very high level? Why are we doing it? What are the components of that? We'll go into the process and the schedule, focus on that public engagement or public education plan, and give you some components of that. You have that in your packet, and we'll go through that, talk about next steps, and then open it up for questions. Probably will only be about 53 minutes, if that's okay, Mayor? Joking. Okay, so what is a general plan? And I'm not gonna read here, but you can see there's a lot of words on the screen. Essentially, a general plan is the community's vision for your future. And I'll get a little closer. Is that better for you? Sorry. So a community's vision for your future in a land use plan. We often call a general plan a blueprint for growth, a 30,000-foot policy guideline. This includes future land use designations, goals, policies, all of that kind of stuff. General plan is general in that it's that 30,000-foot policy document. It's comprehensive in that it includes a variety of different topics, and I'll talk about those. And then it's long-range in orientation, which means it's looking out into the future 10, 15 years and build out in what your community wants to see for the growth and development of your community. A lot of things on the screen there that a general plan is not. Most specifically, it's not a zoning map, it's not a capital improvement plan, but it implements those, it drives those, it's meant to drive those. Okay, so I'd like to show this triangle in terms of the foundation of general plan in relation to the rest of your planning documents. General plan is the base or the foundation of these documents. And then as you go up this pyramid, things get more precise, more specific, and they implement your community's vision. They're all meant to implement. So as you go up the rungs there, you see your zoning, your corridor plans, your subdivision regulations. Then you get into your site plans, your subdivision regulations, and then into the built environment of your building plans and your certificate of occupancies. So some of you might be asking why we have a general plan. It's on the right-hand side there. Why are we updating this general plan? We have one, it's great, and it is, in fact, a very good general plan. And the simple answer is because the state statute tells us we need to. And that's not so, that's joking, tongue-in-cheek a little bit. But every 10 years, a municipality is meant to look at their general plan at minimum, re-adopt that or update it. The more important reason in the impetus behind that is that as a visionary document, a community vision, it's important to take the pulse of the community and ensure that document is, in fact, relaying the community's vision and values. And so that's what we're doing through this process. There are many topics covered in this general plan. These are the same topics that are covered in your existing general plan. There are thresholds for communities as you bump over certain populations. Since you're over 50,000, you get to address them all, all 17 topic areas. And so you can see they're wide-ranging from land use and circulation, environmental, cost of development, water resources, conservation, I'm not gonna read them all, housing, safety, bicycling, a lot of topic areas. And there's a lot of ways that we can put these together so that folks can understand this. And just because we have 17 topic areas doesn't mean we're gonna have a 500-page document. We can theme those topic areas and make it more digestible for folks, similar to what you have. It's a very good structure. All right. Your current general plan does have a vision statement. This is the vision statement that you have. It's a very lengthy vision statement. We are going to the process right now, and I'll be talking about We are going to the process right now, and I'll be talking about our first questionnaire and the workshops that we're going to be doing. We're going to be looking at this vision statement in terms of, does it still, is it still relevant for people? Yes, it's long, and maybe we can shrink that down, but is it relevant? Are the words in there resonate with the community? Is that still what we're looking for for the for the future of Lake Havasu City? So we're going to be going through a process of evaluating that that vision statement, and we're starting that right now with the first questionnaire. The most visible aspect of a general plan is your future land use map, and this is your current future land use map. Many people get this confused with zoning. This is not your zoning map. It may not be in concert with your zoning or the existing land uses that are happening on the ground right now. This is the future vision relayed in land use, future land use criteria or designations, and they're like non-residential, residential, resort, open space. And this is the picture that you will see for the future. Now, as you guys know, as rezonings come in to you and people ask to develop their property, those must statutorily be in concert with this community vision, and that's how the general plan is implemented. That's the primary way that the general plan is implemented. Goals and policies, very important part, statutorily required. Every topic, whether they're themed or individual, will have goals and policies. You can see that how these are structured. These are your current goals and policies for land use, a couple of them. So overarching goal, and then policies that follow that. Range of development opportunities, mix of housing, infill and redevelopment, all looking towards planning for the ongoing growth and development of the community. We will go through a process here with a technical advisory committee and the project team to be looking at each one of these goals and policies. We call it a plan audit. So we're going to take a look at these, see if they're still relevant, if they need to be revised, and so on. There are things that will be new that will go into there as well. Implementation plan, last component of a general plan. This is not a statutory requirement, but I highly commend communities that do this. Implementation plan is another way to implement your community's vision. These are things that you are already doing usually, like amending your codes, doing different plans, coordination with different agencies in order to create that vision. Sometimes they look like you have here, there's a lead, there's prioritizations. Sometimes it's short-term, midterm, long-term. But it's a great way to show implementation for your general plan and do that beyond just your rezonings. And then your planning director or your director can get up at the end of the year and say, "In addition to XYZ rezonings, we've done, you know, short-term, we've started this." All these different things that they will be able to say in relation to implementing your community's vision. Okay. So with that, I'm going to go into process and schedule. And Mayor, I'll just look to you. If there's, if you want me to stop or take a pause, or anyone has questions, I'm happy to, or we can do that at the end.
We'll do that at the end.
Okay, certainly. Okay, process and schedule. This infographic that we have on the screen is a cartoon. So it's an infographic. We have a lot of our schedules, our Gantt charts, lengthy deliverables and meetings that the planners love. But this captures all of this. It's a year-and-a-half process of going through these five different phases. And you can say, you can see the star of this is where we are, to get from startup all the way to council adoption in the celebration phase. And then ultimately, just like your current general plan, this has to go to the voters for ratification or for approval. So right now, we've launched into the first three phases of the project, that launched to discover the envision. We're starting our startups, our kickoff meetings, we're starting existing conditions, we're starting questionnaires. We have a website I'll show you. We'll start getting into those public workshops, and then that star will move over and we'll start doing build and envision together. So we'll start asking the community about things, we'll start building the plan, bringing back things to the community, seeing if we got it right, and then build it a little bit more. And by the end of that build phase, we'll have a document. And that document will go into a statutory 60-day review period. That's where our pencils are down. We do an open house, we get comment on that. And then we come through the legislative process through Planning Commission and Council, and then go into that celebration phase. Hopefully, everybody's happy about that. Or, you know, sometimes I say, if nobody's happy, we know we hit the mark, right? Nobody's, everyone's a little bit unhappy. But, so we'll get to the end of that, and then there'll be a pause of a four-month period before it goes on to the ballot. The whole process is oriented towards keeping the general plan in people's mind throughout the process and making sure that we hear as many people in this process as possible so that the plan is meaningful to the community. Four minutes. No problem. Oh, no. Oh, no. Can't make it work.
We're looking like we're going to forward the screen if we can.
Okay. I think the battery may have died. I'll just say next. Okay. Public education plan, you have this in your packet. I want to go over it. I realize that I'm nearly at time here, but I want to do a little pause here and talk about this. This is our strategy moving forward. If you can just go back one slide. The overview of this is, the short story is, this is statutorily required. It's also a really good idea when you're doing a community vision. There are components of the statute that we must meet for broad dissemination, opportunity for people to make written and verbal comments, and that we'll have those public hearings, et cetera. This plan, 10-page plan, is meant to strategize, get the biggest bang for the buck, and meet that statutory requirement. Next. So here it is, this is what it looks like. There are two key areas. We have key participants, and you can see the list there, and we have key strategies. And I'm going to go through each one of those as I go down this list. So next, thank you. Okay, legislative groups. You know who you are, but I wanted to give you an idea of what the expectation and what the ask is here for city council and planning commission. Of course, we are going to come back to both bodies and give regular updates. You know that you're elected and appointed. We hope that you're ambassadors, and you're getting the word out into your different areas of influence. We will lean on council for listening sessions or interviews. We want to listen to all of you and have individual conversations with you throughout this process. We are setting up a general plan steering committee. I'll talk more about that in a minute. You will be part of that process. We would like you to, if you're able to come to those meetings and observe those meetings, come to the events and get the word out and that sort of thing. And again, we will come to you for regular updates. Jeff will be up here, I'll be up here giving you updates throughout the process. And then ultimately, we will come to this body at the end of the process with a resolution and hopefully a very positive recommendation from your planning commission for approval. Planning commission, same sort of thing. They have that legislative process, they're community ambassadors, and they have that recommendation duty in this process. We will be giving them regular updates as well. Next. And then we have some of our functional and our community groups. TAC stands for Technical Advisory Committee, and GPSC is General Plan Steering Committee. Our TAC committee is technical and functional experts. These will be our internal department heads or liaisons for functional expertise. Some external agencies, parks and that sort of thing, selected by the project team. And then they will be looking at existing conditions, plan drafts, and that sort of thing throughout the process. We also have the General Plan Steering Committee. Applications for, we have, we want 17 community members, professional, regular community members and professional folks to apply for that. The application process is open right now until April 25th. It is on the project website that I'll show you in just a minute. This will be, again, selected by project team, as well as under your influence and your appointment as well. This steering committee is really the heart of this plan. They will be involved in the plan drafting, they're going to be community ambassadors, and we'll lean on them throughout the whole process of getting their voice involved. And in addition, next. We want all community members to be involved in this process. If I've, if I could say it every time, I would. If we could have all, every single voice in this process, we would. We are going to do our best to get the word out and to get that input in. We have groups that we've established that we're going to be reaching out to. We're going to be doing listening sessions and interviews. If council has any advice or direction or people that we need to talk to, we would love to hear from you. Please get that over to Jeff, and we'll reach out to those folks or entities as well. Next. Project branding is very important. We worked with your community engagement officer and the project team to establish a look and a color, the fonts of this plan that will carry throughout the whole year-and-a-half process. The project website is launched. As of tomorrow, you'll be able to go to the city's website and link right to this. You can also go to the URL at the bottom, there's some info sheets in the back, and you can go to that right now. So it is launched. Wealth of information on this project website with regard to meetings and events that will come up, questionnaires, resources. This is where the steering committee folks that are interested can go in and make their application right on this webpage. So a lot of good things on this webpage that will go through the process. Next. And then I want to promote the first questionnaire. It is out. We have flyers in the back that folks can take, and they can go to that, they can scan this QR. A lot of, you know, what's going well, what needs to be improved, what's your vision? Taking a look at that vision statement already and asking people, does this resonate with you? We also have the first info sheet out that you can see on the right-hand side, getting that out into the folks' hands. Next. Okay, lots of things on this slide here. We're going to have multiple workshops, we're going to have community drop-in events, I have a slide for that in just a second, open houses, in-person events, as well as virtual. So different ways to get the word out through E-list, social media, news releases, and different interactive things, be they visual preference or interactive boards and mapping and that sort of thing. So a lot of inclusive engagement to different ways that people like to participate. Next. And then these drop-in events. So these can be anything, but we are really focused on community members in Lake Havasu City. So events that we can go out, make it fun, whether it's a grocery store or a library, whether it's an event that's a local community event, and really getting out there, providing fun games and things for people to do, and getting input into the community vision. Next. Next steps, questionnaire. We are in the midst of doing existing conditions report. You will see that online in May. Doing those interviews that will go into May, and then the different kickoff meetings with our TAC group, technical committee, planning commission, and then once the general plan steering committee is appointed, then we'll do a kickoff meeting with them as well. We envisioned doing those first, that first set of workshops, the multiple sessions in there in the summer months. And so we're looking at venues for that and for times for that, community events. And then, of course, coming back and updating the council and the commission. We'll have summaries of each one of these phases put on the website, so folks will be able to see the summary and follow along as we go. Next. All right, I know I'm over, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions right now. We are looking for a motion for adoption of the public education plan. Happy to take any input or floor amendments and any questions that you might have.
Perfect, thank you so much, Mr. Tunneman and Ms. Hogan. Are there questions for members of the council for...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, Councilmember Diaz?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Do we have Logan Simpson Design, Inc., are they under contract already with the city for other things besides the general plan? Or are we just hiring them for the general plan?
Just for the general plan.
Okay, so with that said, I was looking at one of the sentences on our council communication in the back under fiscal impact. It says, "The public education plan is included in the overall contract with Logan Simpson Design." So then I thought we had other things they were doing. So what is the cost? What is the, what are we paying Logan Simpson Design for this general plan that they're going to be developing for us? Do we know?
Yeah, the contract that council approved on January 28th was $225,000.
Okay, thank you. And then that was a very thorough presentation, so thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the associate's name that gave the presentation. But you basically mentioned there was a 60-day review period that's mandated. And then after that, it's basically a four-month, I said incubation period, so that's six months. So that would be like June 1st of next year. So I guess my question is, are we cutting it kind of close to the vest since this is going to be voted on in November, probably the first Tuesday in November of 2026? Six months before that, it seems like, based on the presentation I just heard, it has to be ready to rock and roll six months prior to that. So I'm just asking, are we cutting this too close to the vest, or is this the normal time period that we do this with?
Mayor, Councilman Diaz, this is Terry Hogan from Logan Simpson. I apologize, I didn't clearly say my name.
Thank you.
Yes, so we have, we have a calendar where we've backed into those dates for the city so that we can cover the mandatory 60-day public review, as well as coming to Planning Commission on two occasions, and then city council, and leaving some buffer room in that for that four-month period to the ballot. So it is built in and baked into that, to that schedule with some wiggle room, sir.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Vice Mayor Lynn?
Yes, I was looking at your community groups. I think one group that might be missing is the Partnership for Economic Development. I know they have a lot of projects and things going on, and now I'm the new liaison on that board, and I think it's really important that they're involved in these conversations, too.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. You know, thank you for the presentation. I think this is a really robust education plan for our citizens to engage in the process and meet our citizens where they're at. So thank you, whether it's on their couch, scanning a QR code, or they're attending a public meeting, or going to be a member of one of the committees. It's a great plan for us to be able to move forward. Any other comments or questions for members of council, or entertain a motion?
Mayor? A motion to move to adopt Resolution Number 25-3825, adopting the public education plan for the 2026 General Plan Update.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, thank you. All right, our final public hearing of the evening is item 7.4. It's discussion and possible direction regarding the outdoor pool. Vice Mary Lynn requested this at our last council meeting, so I'll turn it over to you, Vice Mary Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I requested that we put this item on the agenda for discussion after we had a citizen request an update on where we were in the process of the possible outdoor pool that was outlined in our five-year CIP budget. We discussed the process at our 2024 budget meeting, so I wanted to review that direction that was given at that meeting. I've asked Ms. Gary to show a clip of that discussion, so you guys got to bear with me, it's about six minutes, so that we can review and so that we're all on the same page of what that direction was. And after we review that, I believe our parks director has a PowerPoint that she can maybe follow through with that. Okay?
Are there any questions or comments or thoughts for members of the council before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few comments because this is my, the final budget, the eighth and final budget that we've had since I've been on council. As you all know, I'm leaving at the end of this year. And I just want to say thank you to the staff. This is the eighth budget that has been balanced, the eighth budget with no raising taxes. We hear all the time, cities need to live within their means, and we do. Very happy with that. And as you brought up, Mayor, I'm very happy with the fact that in the CIP, we have $2.5 million that we are setting aside for our fully-funded CIP for the swimming pool for our swim teams, that desperately need that as we move forward. And I look forward to seeing that project go forward. But I just want to say thank you for all that you guys have done over the years with this budget and making sure that we don't raise the taxes and that we live within our means. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional, yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. You brought up the pool, and I don't have the original... You brought up the pool and I don't have the original budget book that we had in front of me. Wasn't it supposed to be in 2425? Because the one that I'm looking at says it's 2526.
Yeah, great question. Yeah, in our original book, Ms. Olson, the summary does have that in 24, excuse me, 2526.
Yes, 2526.
Okay.
So am I incorrect? The last book that we had, didn't it say 2425? Has it always been 2526? Because I thought the previous one that we looked at was 2425.
It says, this is the original book that we distributed and it says 2526.
Okay. I'm confused. I thought it was 2425.
It is. I think originally we were talking about this year, but I think making all the pieces of the puzzle fit.
When did that? I'm just curious, when did that change? I think I missed that.
Mayor, if I can, Councilmember Lynn. A lot of times with projects like this, it's always been identified for that. A lot of projects like this is a lot of work, a lot of effort goes into soliciting for bids and getting a contract, designing contractor under contract. And then the funds are in the budget for the year that were spent, but also kind of when that's delivered. So we're not going to wait, you know, with council's approval. We're not waiting to start the project until a year from now. But we will start that project over the course of the next couple of months. And then, you know, it's not something that we can build and be done within like two months. So that's highlighted in that area.
I'm still confused. Because if it's not in the budget till 2526, how can we start it in 2425?
Because we have to get under contract. We have to solicit bids and through like all of our projects, we have to, Mr. Foggan indicated that we are going to be, we just dropped the RFQ today for the design services for the second bridge. So that is a good six-plus weeks of time it takes to receive proposals. Then once we get the proposal, it'll take several weeks for us to score the proposal, then we enter into negotiations with that firm to bring him, you know, to bring him under contract, bring that contract to council, and then start all the process it takes to get that ball rolling. So if council would like to look at moving projects around, we can, but we identify these projects kind of based on the dollars that we have coming in, you know, throughout the course of time. So all ears are open. And if council would like to accelerate that schedule, we can certainly take a look at that and maybe rearrange a project in the general fund to make that occur or take a look at other options that are out there. So it's going to take six months before we can even get close to, if we went right now, it would take us six months for us to spend a penny on this project.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Lynn? Yeah. So I would like that flexibility, Mr. Knutson, to be able to move it up. You know, if you're able to get it out in six months and it all makes sense, I think that we bring it back to council for a timeline that moves it forward, should that make sense from a contractor standpoint and from the design build. I mean, we don't have all of those designs put together, but once they are, I would like to keep that flexibility available to do so.
Mayor, council, I'm hearing from the council, is that something that is a priority of the council? And if that's the case, we will start that process and come back to council at the appropriate time to make sure that there's funding that's available to keep that going.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is that the only project that we moved like that? I'm just really trying to understand.
It actually, it wasn't moved. This is, I have the original book that was given to us during the work session that was on April 11th, and it is in 2526.
Is it? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Just to kind of clarify on this, so I mean, of course, we're not talking about, we need the $2.5 million sitting there right now to pay for the pool, but it sounds like we're probably going to need to do plans and do some things, you know, do we have money for that within this next year to, you know, keep the project moving as we go? And then, I mean, I'm assuming if we started construction, it probably wouldn't be till, you know, the next budget anyway. But do we have those contingencies in there so we can get plans and keep the project? I guess the concern is, you know, just that we just wait till 2025 to start doing it. But I know there's, we can also do a lot of planning on the city staff side without spending money as well. So just meant, I'd also like maybe see that we can at least keep the project going in that area and the actual funding of the big project to, you know, break ground and start doing it would be in 2025, but that we have the, in the budget to be able to, you know, approve plans and start to keep the project going so we're ready to hit the ground running in 2025.
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, what I'm hearing from council is, what's taken so long? So we'll get to work and then we'll start that process without delay.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, we just had this conversation a little bit ago and I was under the assumption that we were having conversations with the school district to help facilitate.
Thank you. Now I'm hoping that some of those questions can be answered. Can we have Ms. Vera come up?
Mayor, council, thank you guys for having me. Let me pull up my notes. So I don't necessarily have all the answers to your questions, but I am going to speak on the demands that we're currently facing within our department regarding the pool. I can get my notebook unlocked. So you can go to the next slide. I don't know if this is working. There we go. I have magic touch. So when we talk about the demand, I want to kind of touch points on some of the things that the Parks Department is doing currently within our own facility. So the demand we're seeing is we have a huge need for swim lessons for our children and participants in the community. Currently, we're only able to serve 30 participants at a time per session, which doesn't meet the needs that we currently are seeing. As soon as we open up swim lessons, we're seeing that registration fills within the same day. So we're not really necessarily able to service the community that we should because of how busy and packed the pool is. The other thing is limiting the size, like the class sizes, because we have so many things going on in the pool at the same time. So on an occasion, we could have swim team, the stingrays can be out there using the facility, and we're also teaching swim lessons. So that takes some of the area of the pool that could be used for other swim lessons or for even the swim team. And then access to alternative programs. So we see that there's a high community interest in what we're offering currently and that people are expressing needs for, you know, more lap swim, more special events, more fitness classes, more free swim time. And we're just unable to do that because we don't have the space to offer that. And then if we look at our current programs, right now we have our fitness classes, our swim lessons, adaptive swim lessons, free swim, lap swim, and then we also incorporate the school swim team and then the stingrays as well, all in this one area. And then for our future programs, we're hoping that we can offer adaptive swim lessons for adults. We're hoping that we can offer adult swim lessons, water safety classes, more special event programs. So those are the things that we're currently looking at and we aren't necessarily able to offer because of the limited space. And then I just kind of want to go over just some of the cost considerations with us adding an outdoor pool. Some of the things that we'll be looking at is the power and electricity, energy, pool chemicals, equipment maintenance, our certified pool operators, lifeguards, and then those miscellaneous, those things that pop up, our lane ropes, extra parts, components when things start to break down. And that's what I have currently.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. Vice Mary Lynn?
And Ms. Vera, maybe some of these questions you can't answer because you weren't there when we went through these things. So is there anyone that can answer some of these questions? Like where are we in the RFP process? Where are we in the soliciting bids? Do we, where are we in any of that?
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Lynn, thank you, Gabby. Appreciate everything you're doing. So right now we have the project in next fiscal year's budget, so it's all set for funding. If council continues to choose that route, or July 1st, 2025, that's when our CIP and our budget goes into effect. We've had some conversations about what that means, some at the budget meeting that was, or the council meeting where the budget was discussed, and I have lots of conversations with individual councilmembers over the course of the last several months and in terms of what that looks like. If you want to know, we are teed up in terms of cost estimates. We know approximately what the design's going to cost. We know approximately what the 25-meter by 25-yard pool will cost. And we're teed up for the construction of that pool if the council directs staff in that manner. So the thing, what I'm asking if we can through this conversation is, was the council directing the team to build the pool at the council, excuse me, at the Aquatic Center? Do we want to have conversations with the school district? Are there other options that are out there? Once some of those answers, when some of those questions are answered, staff will be in a position to get it done.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's what I'm asking though, why weren't those things done? Like I feel like what we watched was the direction that we gave is to have those conversations and to speed up that process so we were ready in 25. Like I want to hear from my other councilmembers, but I, that's why I brought the video there, because I thought that's what the direction we gave. It wasn't to have another budget meeting to say, are you sure you want this pool? It was direction, get things ready. And if we do change our mind, at least they're ready to do. And I don't believe there's a cost into having our staff look at some of those things. So I'm just really confused because we have constituents saying, where are we? And I don't really feel like we've done anything. And that's just my opinion. So I'd like, I mean, I'm ready to hear from the people in the audience and I want to hear from my other councilmembers, but it was clearly stated in that direction that let's go, move it. And we have two articles in the newspaper that are stating the same thing, that we're moving in that process. What process? And I'm sorry, I'm really passionate because I'm nervous to be talking about this because I don't want to put anybody, but it specifically says that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, let me, I'll, let me jump in here, Vice Mary Lynn. So where we stood and where we're at is, and this is from my perspective, so this all started, again, from my perspective, from two residents that came to coffee with mayor and city manager. One of them was passionate about swim team, one was passionate about there was not enough lap swim time. And so that kind of started the conversation. We moved pretty rapidly from there and incorporated it into the budget process and we were moving in a good direction. The CIP budget that we adopted, this council adopted, had it in the 2526 fiscal year. And when it was presented, what we just saw, that video excerpt was from a council meeting in which we were having our final budget adoption. So that's the context of where it was. That was a meeting that happened on June 11th of 2024. And it, at that time, came up that we want to move quicker on the pool, again, from community engagement. And from what we just watched, Mr. Knutson said, yeah, we'll do that. It sounds like that's what the council wants, that's what the community wants, we'll do that. Then fast forward to September, now we start having conversations about 25, is it 25 meters, 25 yards, whatever, 25 whatevers is not the right one, we need it to be 50 whatevers. And so we started having that conversation. Should it be 50 or should it be 25? Where would that be and how would that look? We were still talking at this time to do it outside of the current Aquatic Center and use that space so that we have the shared lifeguard, shared locker rooms, all of those things, cutting down on costs. We then had some discussions with school district, if is that a possibility, is that something that they would consider partnering? We had some other ones, other folks come forward, like is that the best location? So there's nothing that this council has given, Mr. Knutson here and his team, about where to go start an RFP. You can't go say I want an RFP for a pool that's going to go somewhere. It has to say, we want a pool to go here on this land with this parameters. Once we say that, they can get to work. So any one of us throughout the year had the ability to come back and say, hey, we need to amend our CIP budget so that we can move that pool forward. And that was what Mr. Knutson said in the video that we just watched, that, you know, it's in the 2526 fiscal budget. I hear you, we'll move fast. But with some of those conversations that he was having with the community and with councilmembers, we still don't know where it's going to be. Still to this day, we don't know. I'm in favor of keeping it at the Aquatic Center. I think one location's the best. We find that parents that have children in multiple age brackets for different sports, so say soccer, they're having to jump from field to field and then they have to maybe leave one child unattended while they run to the other field to go pick up their kid. So I think it's, the Aquatic Center's the best. I think we're having our lifeguards that are already there and trained is the most efficient from the operational standpoint. I also like the shared locker room. I think that's a good thing for cost. So that's my preference, but there are some downturns to that. There's not room for a 50. There, it's only a room for a 25. The cost is about $2.5 million is what we have allocated in the budget. We can do some of those things based on the initial cost estimates that we have, but we never got those questions answered at all of where the location's going to be. So tonight, we're talking about the pool. And then guess what? Two days from now, we're talking about the pool because we're going to be talking about our CIP budget. And that CIP budget is currently allocated for the $2.5 million to get this pool moving. So I don't think that the direction of council changed. I don't think that Mr. Knutson and his team were not doing what we asked them to do. We approved by action, the council approved by action, the CIP budget with that in 2526. And if we wanted to change that throughout the year, we could, and I would have been willing to leave that had we known where it was going to be. We're still getting there. So we had some citizens come last week, our last council meeting to bring it forward. If they had those interests at that time, you could have called ahead of time and we could have said, hey, this is what's happening and this is where we need to go and this is what we need from you. When I just mentioned that 25 would work, I see one of you shaking your head that, yeah, that would work. First time I'm hearing that right now, is that it? That's not the last I heard. So we're able to do it, but we can't have that mixed messaging. So we didn't give the city team anything to do. So I mean, it really falls on our shoulders. I'll bear that. We're going to move forward if that's the direction that this council wants to do, but we have to do it by action of this council. So again, that's my perspective.
Mr. Mayor, but I have the minutes from June that say exactly that. Mayor Shi explained that $2.5 million is identified for a second pool in fiscal year 2526, yes, as part of the approved CIP, yes. But noted that based on discussions this evening, which is June 2024, the city manager and staff is going to move up and start the process of requests for proposals and designs. That is what we said, that's the direction. It's in our minutes and that hasn't happened.
You cannot do an RFP, Vice Mary Lynn, if you don't know where the pool's going to be located and if it's going to be 25 or it's going to be 50. You cannot do that.
But then, so are you going to say this is the council's fault for not going back to the city manager and to the staff and saying, why aren't you doing this? Because I didn't think that that was us, for us to do that.
Well, I don't know that it's anyone's fault. It's the process in which we find ourselves in. So I don't think it's, there's nothing to fault here. If the direction right now is to build a second pool, which that's currently, which is in the current CIP budget, that is what we're going to do. Now, yes, the council would have had to come back by action and say, we need to re, we need to move this project, so we need to move this project out of the way to put the pool project forward in the current fiscal year that we're in. So we don't have an additional 250. We would have to have moved another capital improvement project, whether that would have been a traffic signal, a park project, a road project, whatever it might have been. We would have to move that money out and replace it with this money and take that 200, 2.5 million and move it into next fiscal year, which we could have done if we knew the answer. We don't know where the pool was going to be. So far, we know where I want it to be, but we don't know where the rest of us want to have that pool go for Mr. Knutson and his team to go forward and do an RFP.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I agree. I'm kind of confused on this too, because I thought we gave, and not to throw staff under the bus, but I think we need to keep this moving. And I thought the ball was here, the ball's to you guys, get this going. Yes, we can do so much, we can do so much with this without spending a dollar, which is what we said in the meeting. And that's where I thought we were and I thought we were ready to, when we do our budget, yes, we have those plans, we're ready to go as of July 1st, we can start breaking ground. But like I didn't know the size was an issue or where we were putting it, or then maybe that's where staff needs to come back to us and say, hey, okay, well, to keep the ball going in the way you want it, we need to have these decisions and then bring. I thought it was just, we were, we decided on the pool, the budget, those kind of things. And so if that's where we are, I think, and not even just to focus much on the past, but those kinds of things. And so if that's where we are, I think, and not even just to focus much on the past, but like, okay, so if this, I think we're all kind of on the same page, like we want this to keep going. And rather than appear trying to point fingers at who did what, like, how do we keep it moving? Like, I think, is it this meeting? Is it the meeting two days from now where we, where we sit down and we discuss the size and we decide? Or do we sit down with the school district and talk with them and get like, how do we, how do we keep the ball rolling? Cause I think we're kind of all on the same page. And I think we all, you know, we still got three or four months left in this budget or in this year to keep doing stuff. So we can get as early into that new fiscal budget and hit the ground running. And I guess that's, how, how do we then make it productive from here on out now that we're kind of all on the same page? And we get them the answers that they need. So we can kind of just keep plowing through at a good speed. So.
Great questions. Mr. Knutson, did you want to address that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council. We're ready to go. So we're, we're talking about in terms of putting out an RFP to start the design services. That contract would have to be in effect come July 1st. We're teed up, ready to go. We can accomplish that, no problem. We do have a work session that's scheduled for Thursday. And so we can have some conversations on what that looks like. If council is solidified in terms of our approach to build a 25 meter by 25 yard pool on the aquatic center site, we are, that'll, that'll quickly, quickly happen in terms of teeing up the design and getting that started. We're, we're from an RFP bid selection process, our selection process to get a design underway. We can accomplish that prior to July 1st. We're ready to go. I, I need, but I need head nods or excuse me, I need direction from council saying, let's continue to do that. We, we have a five year.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Knutson still speaking, Councilmember Diaz.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If I can, just kind of take things.
Is your microphone on, Mr. Knutson?
What's that?
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry. Is it a little closer?
Yes.
In fact, I could take a step back and put things in perspective. It'd be perfectly clear on, on, on Thursday, when we have the budget work session for the capital improvement plan, where we're talking about the five-year plan for projects for whether it's in parks or water, wastewater, roads, construction, all throughout the, the process. We identify projects in year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five. And we're, we're, as a, as a team, we're, we're accomplishing lots and lots of projects in this fiscal year. And we're ready to do it again for, for next year. So a lot of these things are being teed up, including the outdoor pool. If I can get a direction from, from council in that regard. And I think I'm hearing in that, to that degree right now, that we're still on, on track in terms of a 25 by a meter by 25 yard pool at the aquatic center site. And that was the plan that was, that was presented.
Nice question.
Yes, Councilmember Moses, then we'll go to Councilmember Diaz.
Yeah. So I was in, in those meetings with the school district. Were there any, can you share any information? If those meetings netted any information that would change 25 by 25 being put at the aquatic center? I mean, you see, you see what I'm saying? Is there, did we get any information from the school district saying that, that they can help with a different site or, or anything like that? Or is this still our best option moving forward?
Mayor, Councilmember Moses, I've had lots and lots of verbal conversations and, and discussions, but nothing that is identified in, in a firm proposal or partnership.
So we're just not going to wait for that. It sounds like, I mean, that's what I've kind of been waiting for is that firm proposal, partnership. And if they're not going to do it, that's kind of, I understand your frustration absolutely. Cause you watch that back. It's like, yeah, yeah, we say get moving, but we still can't spend it till, you know, till June. And, and I know the ball has been rolling because I've heard and I've seen and, and I know there's lots of conversations happening which need to happen because we need to make sure we do it right the first time. I've kind of been waiting to see what the school district wanted to do about anything, if in fact they could. And so, yeah, I, I, if you want my opinion, if, if no one else is going to come forward, the, the best option seems to be at our aquatic center. And the 25 yard by 25 meter, see if you just stay in both. I think you, you can do, you can do whatever you want, I guess. Just you got, just got to go to the other side of the square. But, but it seems to be the best option forward. And yeah, let's hit the ground running in June.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question? Who at the school district were they talking to? Like, was it the school board? Was it, who at the school district? Cause I'm trying to figure out when those conversations were had. I did my research too, and I went back into our city manager reports and I don't see any, any of those. I don't know when were those conversations had. And, and here's why I'm taking it personal. If it was because the council dropped the ball and didn't, you know, continually ask staff on it. I didn't know we were supposed to do that. And if we were supposed to do that, who were we supposed to ask? If I didn't know they were having the meetings with the school district, I didn't know it was my job to go and ask the school district that. If you did have those meetings, what were you told in those meetings and who did you talk to? So I just don't, as a council member, I'm not going to be thrown under the bus here because this did not keep going. I don't know what conversations you had with people at the school district, but I didn't. I didn't. I spoke to our school, current school board president and asked him to be here today to ask if that's a conversation they like to have. But why did I do that? I don't understand why I had to do that.
I don't see a bus in this room, Vice Mary Lynn. I think we're having a discussion. How do we accomplish a goal? I, I don't know that anyone's blaming anybody. So the, the fact of the matter, the, the city staff can only spend money that's allocated to them. The only people that get to allocate the money is the council. So I don't think that there's blame. I think there's lots of conversations that occurred. I think a lot of informal conversations I've had come from conversations with elected members of, of the school board. I've also had conversations with, with staff at the school. I, I don't know that I would call it a meeting. It would be a telephone call or when I see them at, at, at an event to say, hey, is there opportunity? I, I don't know that it's any of those things. I think there was just so many things that we were considering. And we had to get it all, all together. So I, I don't think it had anything to do with any of those things. I do think that we're able to, to move forward if we all agree now on the location. So if we're comfortable that, let's, let's stop having conversations with others. We're going to do it, like Havasu City is going to do it. We're going to do it for two and a half million dollars in the budget and we're going to do it at the aquatic center. If that's the case. Yeah. So, but that's the case. That's where we can then move forward. So yeah, Councilmember, let me go to Councilmember Diaz who's been waiting and then we'll open up to Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, well, first thing I want to say is the, and the comment was made in that video. And thank you, Michelle from Vice Mary Lynn for running that video because it kind of brought back some, some things that I, that I remembered also. But number one, it's not a swimming, swimming pool for the swim team. This, I, I, if that's, if that's what we're saying, we're going to build a swimming pool for the swim team, then I'm a hard no. It's a swimming pool for all the citizens of Lake Havasu to utilize. And, and I think it needs to be, it needs to be marketed that way. And the first comment that the council member made when he brought it up at that segment, on that June 11th meeting, that he's glad that we're having a, building a swimming pool for the swim team. That's not what we're doing. First of all, that's my opinion. Second of all, I guess my question would be, the council was really clear to staff, and I'm not trying to throw staff under the bus. The council was really clear to staff at that meeting that we wanted to take it out of 25, 26 and move it forward to 24, 25. And like Councilmember Dolan just said, we should be breaking ground in July, which is two months away if this year, but we're not even close to that. But based on that video I just saw, based on the minutes that I've read, based on, on the article that was in the newspaper, what did we do the last nine months based on that direction? Did we just not do anything? And now we're back at square one? Because did anything happen differently because of that direction that we gave staff in, on June 11th? That's, that's my question.
Okay. Yeah. So yes, based on that direction, it opened up conversations to see if there was other partnerships and what the, where the location of the pool and the size of the pool, those conversations occurred. So, you know, the newspaper is, is a great source, but it's, it, it's not the official action of the council. It's, it's a one person's interpretation of the conversation that we had. The action that we took, from the minutes that you read, that you're mentioning, Councilmember Diaz, was that Councilmember Lane moved to adopt the resolution, adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for the period of July 1, 24 through June 30th of 2029. It was seconded by Vice Mayor Moses at the time and it carried with the following vote, seven to zero. So the action taken by the council had two and a half million dollars in fiscal year 25, 26. So it doesn't matter what the newspaper says. It doesn't matter what the conversation has. The motion that the governing body gave was to approve that CIP budget as is, and that's all that the staff can do. So those additional conversations have, have what has hindered the ability to have the design contract, which it sounds like we're going to be able to have that and accomplish it right now.
No, and I agree with that, but, 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 but let's not discount what the paper said. The paper was quoting city, city mayor Kal Sheehi and city manager Jess Knutson. They were quoting you two in the newspaper.
Yeah. So the media, the media writes stories and it's one person's interpretation, the writer is version of what occurred. I was not interviewed for a, a discussion about the pool in the recent articles that I believe you're referring to.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. But I think, I think that it was very clear after that, you know, that meeting that we were going to move forward and, and, and put it into 24, 25 and start. So let me ask you this question then, and Mr. Knutson, I could maybe ask you this question. Have we, I know we're saying we've had, we've had meetings, we've had discussions with contracts and we've got bids, we've got this, that. Do we have concrete? I mean, do we have information that we could look at as the council? Because I think it's kind of hard to be a city council that's cohesive when we're, it seems like we're flying blind. We have some council members say they have no idea what's going on. Others say they know exactly it's been gone, it's been engaging. I mean, it's, it's kind of, we're all over the map.
Mayor Shi, Councilmember Diaz. So that at the budget meeting that was identified through the, the video, that was the final adoption of, of the, the Lake Havasu City budget. The budget identified the pool for 25, 26. Those conversations at the time with, with council was let's get, let's get this rolling. Well, it's not in the budget until 2025 or 25, 26, which is July 1st of, of this year is when the funding is available. But staff get to, get to work in terms of teeing everything up for the selection process and everything else that's needed so that we're ready to go and spend the dollars on July 1st. That's not construction on July 1st. That's the, the first dollars that the city would need to spend on this effort would be for design. So we'll get under, do a solicitation, we'll get under design and we'll get that, that ball rolling. We can do that as quickly as, as July 1st. If that's the direction that council is giving staff to accomplish.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. Um, I am looking, right in front of me right now is the CIP budget for 25, 26. You go to the pool. It says personnel in 24, 25 for the pool, 235,000. Utilities, 85,000. Supplies and services, 75,000. So the operating impact for 24, 25 was supposed to be 395,420. And then in 25, 26, it says the operation impact is the same amount. That confuses me that I will talk about at the CIP and what that has to do. So when this conversation came up, of course I'm thinking something was done. We also have a parks and rec department. So I didn't think that I needed to be knee deep in this conversation because I have been very verbal about the direction I go. I have, I ran for running for water, infrastructure, ground, roads. That's what I ran for. I campaigned for it. I believe in it. I know for a fact that my family helped build a rodeo ground. The city doesn't pay a dollar for. You got the, you got the BMX track. You have the, what is it? The shooting range. You have the motorcycle track. You have the, what's the other one? Stock car racing. And the city doesn't pay for any of that. But all of a sudden I'm getting this messaging, the stingrays want their own pool. And I, look at the pickleball courts. That was a good example. They came how much? Like $750,000 because they love pickleball. What I'm hearing is there is no partnership with anybody. The only partnership is with all the taxpayers of Lake Havasu City, building another swimming pool. When I know a ton of taxpayers without a doubt are worried about our water. They think that's more important. There's a lot of concerns. And then we're just building another park. That was another thing I ran on. 17 parks were going on 18 parks. And many of those parks, including ball fields and soccer fields, need a lot of maintenance. And I said, I don't believe in building another home. If I can't maintain the home I'm in. So again, I approved that budget, the CIP budget, because this was only one item in a whole budget, right? And so then I was hoping that the rest of my council believes this way, they can vote however they want. But for now, I can't go back to my constituents not knowing much of anything. And I want to really know why we have in personal, why in 24, 25 do we have these personal utilities and everything all in this budget, just confusing me even more. So again, that's where I stand, completely confused, like Vice Mayor Lane, on which direction we're going. I have spoke with the school board. I have talked to Rebecca Stone. I've talked to a lot of people. But it goes back to this, any organization that truly supports a unique need. Even Donna Bess Carlton said it perfectly one day. She said, parks and rec is not a top priority for a municipality. Roads, infrastructure, water, public safety, fire, those are top, top priorities. We are fortunate in this community to have the parks, rec department. We are fortunate to have our ball, ball, ball fields. We are very, very blessed to have all that. And I do think the taxpayers are paying a good, but our city manager asked me when I got here, what do you think about a pool? I said, we have a pool in everybody's front yard. Have you seen all the sinkholes and the water breakage? I worry about those things. I, I really do. And I just, I personally, I'm only one of seven, am not, not going to vote for it at this time until our current parks are where they need to be. And our roads and infrastructure, including all of our water mains that are going to cost us millions in the next five years. That's my priority, unless the school or other organizations want to help us out. I said, there's my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. But you also are able to, now I can highlight, do you wonder why the staff's confused? Like with this conversation we just had, like how are, we don't know where it's going to be and we don't all agree on it. A couple of things real quick while I, we shift the conversation, then we'll open it up to the public. But just to put it into perspective, the aquatic center is turning 30 years old this year. So we're going to have a celebration in May. It's a, a well-used event center and also aquatic area. We have had, just in this last year, we had over 65,000 people enjoy open swim this last year at the aquatic center. More than 24,000 people participate in exercises, exercise classes in the pool or in classrooms. So 65,000 open swim. This is not even talking about swim teams at this point. This isn't talking about lap swim users, none of those things, just open swim. So I mean, this is an area that's really enjoyed by so many of our residents with those types of, of numbers. And you know, when it comes to perspective, I believe that our city has always valued parks and recreation and values recreation in our community. That's one of the reasons that we have an after-school program. We have summer camps. We have spring break camps. We do all of those types of things because as a community, we collectively support that and value that. I've always valued that in my time on council and will continue to do that. But there, there is a need for, for a pool. I think what we really just need to accomplish today is that we have 2.5 million dollars in the, the budget for next fiscal year, 25, 26. Are we all comfortable with the location at the aquatic center, 25 by 25 pool? And if that is the case, then the staff has the marching orders to be able to move forward. The next time it would come before us, just procedurally, is we would have to, we'd have to adopt our tentative budget for 25, 26. We'd have to also adopt, once the contractor is selected, if it's over $100,000, we then would have to, which we know it's going to be, that would come before the council. So those would be the official actions that the council would take other than what we're doing this evening, which is giving direction. We will have additional conversation about this on Thursday during the budget work session, because then that's part of the whole picture. So we have the pool plus everything else that's going to be going on there if, if that's the direction of the council. So I'll leave that for all of us to be thinking about what we listen to our citizens.
Mayor, just point of clarification. I, at no time, our family have supported so many parks and rec programs and sponsored and partnershiped. I don't want anybody to all of a sudden say, oh, Campbell doesn't like parks and rec programs or any of that. That's not what I was saying at all. My top priority right now is roads and infrastructure and maintaining what we have. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? You just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record and you can, you could start forming a line too, if you would like.
Hi, my name is Margie Snyder. I have been at the aquatic center since two, I gotta think, two, a long time. Let's leave it at that. Okay. And I've been in, I am the lead water instructor, exercise instructor there. And I want to, you know, I'm so appreciative of that. And we are so busy down there. We start teaching water exercise at 6:30 in the morning and we go to like two o'clock in the afternoon. Then we have Kinder Swim that comes in. And now we're also bringing in the group from Shoving Wavies are coming in. And we're also bringing in Monument Valley. And we're also just increasing all the time, all the things, the programs we can do. And that's under a lot of the leadership of Swan, our director of the aquatic side. But I think that it would, I, I love the idea of a new pool. I love the idea of another pool. I love the idea of the location being there. Because of all the people that come in, it would allow people to move from one pool to the other, depending on what they were doing. Everything's right in the same vicinity. And, but I truly believe that we are busy down there. We, another pool is needed. And I would like to be able to offer more programs for water exercise because there's a whole lot out there that we could give to the people. So just to say, let's get that other pool going. And, you know, thank you for the support to build that pool.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name is Sandy Huey. This is the first council meeting I've ever attended.
You're welcome.
You know, thank you. I was going to start with saying I apologize for, because I want to talk about the pool. But I didn't realize that we were as far as we are. And then sitting here listening to this, I'm like, well, maybe I didn't understand because they're not that far. So here's my, here's my thing. Seven years ago, I had breast cancer and I went to Phoenix. I was fortunate. I was fortunate enough to go to a walking pool in Phoenix and oh my gosh, I started talking to people, it's like, we need a walking pool here. Has anybody ever thought about, I understand the, the need for the kids, the, the lane so they can, but think about how much money people would pay to have a walking pool here, a real walking pool. And I know, I mean, I don't know about, you're talking 25 and is it 25, is it 50? So you haven't even really decided the size yet.
So far, I think tonight we have. I think we're at 25 by 25. Yes.
Okay, well, some people behind me still. Anyway, that's where, that's where I'm at. If we would put a walking pool here, summer people would use it, winter people would use it. It's fabulous if you've ever really walked in a walking pool. It doesn't have to be huge, like the one I was fortunate enough to, to, to use, but a walking pool for our community, the age, the recovery. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Stephanie. I'm a mother and I am a healthcare professional in the community. It sounds, I don't know if I'm going to add anything to this conversation. It sounds like you guys have already decided to make the pool. I just wanted to speak to some of the health benefits of having an outdoor pool. Sorry, I'm public speaking, it's like not my favorite thing. But I think it's important because there's been multiple research that shows repeated exposure to indoor chlorinated pools can have some long-term health effects. So I think that it is important, especially in Havasu where it gets a little bit hot in the summer, having some kind of recreation activity for our kids to stay active is really important and having that option to have an outdoor is important for long-term health in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Stephanie, can we get your last name?
Welton.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I have notes, I don't want to miss some things here. My name is Brittany Millsaps. Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and council members. Before I begin, I'd like to ask, if that's okay, if everyone here who uses the Aquatic Center, whether for swim activities, fitness, lifeguard training, swim team, or open swim to stand. Can I do that? So look around, this is your community and this is who the Aquatic Center serves every single day. Thank you, guys. We are an aquatic city. Life in Lake Havasu revolves around water. Our Aquatic Center is more than just a pool. It represents life, health, and a connection in our community. That may sound dramatic, but when you consider the countless ways this facility is used, the truth becomes clear. This Aquatic Center supports swim lessons and water safety education, lifeguard and junior lifeguard programs, fire and police training and rescue, or rescue training, competitive swim teams, fitness and therapy classes, lap swim, open swim, summer programs, and it's a welcoming, safe space for families, seniors, and youth. The facility runs from 5:00 AM to as late as 7:30 PM on most days and it is maxed out. Activities are being moved, rescheduled, or canceled. During lap swim, it's often overcrowded and hard to even find a lane. My husband and his professional athletes, he trains, join lap swim, but struggle to get lanes or can't because of the schedule. My dad, who's in a wheelchair, uses the pool for exercise, one of the only places in town where he can move safely and stay healthy, and that's invaluable. Both of our kids are active users of the Aquatic Center. Our son is a proud member of the stingray swim team and our daughter is involved in the junior lifeguard and summer programs. These opportunities are powerful for youth. They build confidence, responsibility, and keep kids active and involved in something positive. But we're hitting walls. I know that they can't host proper regulation swim meets here. The pool is not the correct size or depth. And even though we're surrounded by water, we don't even have a water polo team, not because of the lack of interest, but because our pool can't even accommodate it. That's a huge missed opportunity for our youth and our city. We're not only the, sorry, we're not the only ones who see the value in this place. If you go to the Go Lake Havasu website, under all things to do, the Aquatic Center is the number two attraction. So that says a lot and it, it, it is, this isn't just a local need, it's a point of pride for our city. I've been going to this pool since I was a little girl, still does look the same. And now three generations, my family depended on it. It's part of our lifestyle, our wellness and identity. And I did want to acknowledge the June 11 minutes, I do have them here. Thank you for providing that because I think the biggest thing was us wondering where and when that 22.5 was going towards a pool and why would we place it anywhere else? Because it's a multi-use pool. My concern is the size to house proper swimming as well and to get enough lap swim because that is difficult. But with this intense overuse of the facility and it's important to residents and visitors, I was just asking pretty much about what I think we're repeating. We have the chance to make a major impact, to create a facility that meets the real needs of this aquatic city now and into the future. So please, Lake Havasu, as the motto says, go for it. Invest in something that's already changing lives, let's make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Kao Sheehy and the members of the city council. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. My name is Brandon and I'm here to talk about our, why our community really needs another public pool. I've been a part of the junior lifeguard, junior lifeguard program, which taught me a lot of swimming, water safety, and responsibility. I also want to share about my grandpa who uses a wheelchair and struggles to find accessible ways to exercise. Swimming is one of the best activities for him, but our current pool schedule is often too crowded. Making it hard for him to get the exercise time he needs. People like my grandpa deserves a safe, accessible place to exercise regularly. A second pool would make a big difference by creating more space for everyone and giving people with special needs more opportunities to stay active in the safe environment. It would also benefit our whole community by providing a safe place for kids to learn to swim, swim team, aquatic classes, families to enjoy time together, and people of all abilities to stay healthy. I understand that building a new pool would require funding, but I truly believe it's an investment in our community's health and wellbeing. It's not just about fun, it's about safety, health, and equal access. So I respectfully ask you, Mayor Kao Sheehy and the city council, to please consider my, the proper funds for building a second pool. It would help the youth of Havasu, my grandpa, and so many others, others' lives, healthier, active lives. Thank you for your time and for considering this is important need.
Thank you so much. Yeah, great job. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, city council. My name is Dane and I am 12 years old. I am a swimmer on the Lake Havasu City Stingrays Team. A new pool is really important to me, my team, and our whole community. I started swimming open lap swim with my dad here at the Aquatic Center. It's sometimes, it's something healthy and active we love to do together. My dad is a retired professional athlete and swimming is one of the activities that helps his joints and old injuries. I also go to the pool with my grandpa, who's in a wheelchair. The pool is one of the only places he can go in town to exercise safely and I love spending that time with him. As a youth athlete in Havasu, I train every day with amazing dedicated coaches, but our practice times change a lot because of other programs using the pool. That makes it hard to, for us to stay consistent and keep improving. Also, this pool isn't like the pools we compete at in swim meets. We need a proper lap pool to train the right way, represent our city well, and hopefully host swim meets right here in Lake Havasu. I really believe anything that supports the youth in this community is important because it keeps us active, out of trouble, and focused on something positive. Please consider putting the right amount of money towards building a second pool. It would help so many of us now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Great job.
Hello, my name's Kirsten Ferrante. I wrote you guys a letter earlier today, but I wanted to read it to you in person as well. So I've been a resident of Lake Havasu for four years and I've been utilizing the lap pool for my personal exercise. I was a high-level competitive swimmer from eight years old through college. I'm 33 years old now and I choose to continue swimming for exercise because I enjoy it so much and it's so good for our bodies. I'm also part of our master swim team that was recently started and I love that, that master's team gives us, gives it, sorry, adults an opportunity to improve and stay motivated in the water. I'm thrilled to hear that our city plans to add a second lap pool. I would love to see the aquatics programs expand for the community and our future children, sorry, my future children. Since we live in an aquatic-based town, I believe we should offer all aquatic sports, including water polo and diving, to ensure that all kids have more opportunities to grow stronger and safer in the water. Additionally, adding a second pool will add, open up more opportunities and time slots for the rest of the community to use the pool, especially during the summertime. It's great that we add more kids swim programs and open swim during the summer, but it constrains lap swim hours to only 5:00 to 7:00 AM for the rest of us. The pool's overcrowded during that time, so it's hard to get space to, to get a workout in and the early time isn't good for those of us who work early or who aren't morning Sorry, where was I? For a town of about 60,000 residents, plus even more snowbirds in the winter, our tiny six-lane pool just isn't enough. With a second, larger pool, there's even more opportunities to host large invitationals or championship swim meets, bringing more revenue into the city. With a 50-meter by 25-yard pool, there would be sufficient space to host these large meets while maintaining proper warm-up and cool-down lanes for the athletes, as well as continue to keep the indoor pool open to the rest of the community during the meets. The second pool also allow our elite level swimmers to prepare for college swimming by opening up space to have multiple practices a day. As an aquatic and lake town, I believe we should have the best facilities available for all aquatic sports and programs and for all age levels. At a minimum, this will keep our residents safer in the lake, but ultimately it will create a healthier community with more opportunities for athletes and residents to thrive. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and council members. My name is Dr. Lizmar. I am the director and owner of Physical Therapy and Balance Center here in Lake Havasu. I don't want to stand here and be repetitively redundant over and over again. You have heard some amazing people say some amazing things, so I will just add one note. 12 years ago, when I was director at Lakeside Physical Therapy, we did have an aquatic facility. Swan Cook called me one morning and said, I need your help. Okay? We cannot handle the overflow for infant and toddler swim lessons, therapeutic exercises, as well as some form of exercise for our older community. That was 12 years ago. The pool is no longer existent. It is covered with concrete and now has an MRI. Our, our city needs another community-based pool, not just for the stingrays, not just for the high school, but for our community as a whole. And I will just say one thing, one drowning, you cannot teach swimming in a lake. One drowning in our community is too many.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Juliana Baumkrishner. While our city has outgrown our current pool, I would like to address accessibility. As a mother of a double amputee, I have never found this pool to be accessible. It does have a beach entrance, which is great, but if, for example, my son or other community members that need easy access, it doesn't offer that. Once you get into the back of the pool, especially if the bulkhead's up, but there's, with the bulkhead up on the other side, there's four access points, ladders. Well, that's not conducive to everybody, so I would find a second pool to be more conducive. Not only are the access exit points limited, the side walls are really high up. So if somebody needed to get out and had a difficult time, especially like elderly people or all kinds, even me, it's hard for me to get in, in and out, but I think another pool would maybe allow more accessibility. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I just want to say, well, first of all, my name is Paul Kayden. I've been a member of Lake Havasu City since 2006. I got my first start in swimming in 1975. I was on my first swim team. I've swam for many, many years. I swam college, I swam high school, I swam master swimming, I've coached high school, college, I've coached master swimming, so I have a little bit of experience in this. I've heard one person mention a 25-meter or 25-yard by 50-meter pool. If you build a 25 by 25 today, that might be good today, that might be good for five years from now, but it's very short-sighted, very short-sighted. And I have to emphasize that back when I was a little kid, back in the late 70s, I grew up in San Diego, there were swimming pools all around San Diego, which is what we understand. But there was a destination swim meet that we would go to each year and that was in Yuma. And it was a fun, fun time. It was a 50-meter pool. There were several teams from San Diego that would go out there. And what did we do? We would eat at their restaurants, we would stay in their hotels. So I know that parks and rec, and I totally agree with you with, with the streets and the water and all that stuff, but this pool could also be an investment for the city. And I strongly would like to throw out there, let's think about the future, go home tonight, look up some pools in different cities. They are 25 yards by 50 meters. I think it's going to be a short-sighted venture to do a 25 by 25. You got a bigger deck for more teams to hang out. You can, like someone else said a little bit earlier, you can have warm-ups and warm-downs. We can have not just high school swimming, we're not just have USA swimming, but you can have US master swimming coming out. Havasu could be a destination for, for those bigger swim meets. I'm a lap swimmer. I had kids that went through the swim program and did all that. They're moving on now. I still use the pool three to four times a week and I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, but I'd really appreciate this consideration for the new pool and I think really strongly 25 by 50 meters. And I'm, anybody that knows anything about swimming, I know that's, that's a bigger project, it's a bigger footprint, but you're building a second bridge, the city's not the way it was 15 years ago, we are growing. So let's, let's be smart about what we do. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
And Paul, what was your last name?
Kayden.
Kayden, okay. Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name's Martin Stansberry. I'm a taxpayer here in town, pay a lot of taxes. I've never actually used the Aquatic Center pool. I've been to the Aquatic Center many times and it seems like it's always being used quite, quite a bit. So I think it's clear that we do need a second pool. I share your frustration, Councilmember Lynn, 10 months and we haven't moved the ball one yard. I can't imagine that somebody hasn't taken the lead. Somebody hasn't come forward and said, we have these three possible locations. We want to build a 25 by 75 by 90, six feet deep. We want to use blue material. We want 75 parking spots. We need grandstands. I've, I've come from the private industry where this would never work. 10 months and we haven't moved the ball one yard. Just doesn't work. If you hadn't brought it up today, I wonder if 10 more months, if the ball had moved. Really frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Rose, President, Lake Havasu City Unified School District Governing Board. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council. Vice mayor, thank you for inviting me to be here this evening. So we have had some conversations. They've not been an official meeting with the school district. So whenever I first began to have these conversations, I looked into what is the school district able to do and discovered that we are not allowed to invest money into property that the district does not own. We are restricted from doing so and would only be able to currently do what we are doing and pay the usage fees to use the current facilities. However, I am definitely open, as well as my board members always, to a conversation. Partnership is extremely important and would definitely love the conversation of how, you know, the school district can, can partner on our property potentially and what that would look like. So we're always open to that. I, I believe that partnerships between the district and the city are extremely important on all avenues and we're all here to do great things for kids and to serve this community. So know that the board is open to those conversations and, and looking where the funding would come from. For us, we would have to look into our budget and see what is available. A lot of our funding, of course, is for education. However, we do have funding available that does go towards facilities and potentially in, in talking with our business department, it would potentially probably have to be something that would be a bond, part of a bond or override, unless those funds are donated. unless those funds are donated, um, from the community. So again, we are always open to conversation. We are looking forward to partnership, um, as a district with the city to do great things together. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rose, we appreciate it.
Hello, uh, city council. Um, I'm Leila and I'm eight years old. I want you to make the new pool because I want the Havasu Stingrays to learn how to swim farther and have fun swimming. And I want them to have no problems, like no one drowning and no one to have any problems swimming.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Amar, I'm Leila's father. I, this is my first council meeting as well, um, very interesting process. Thank you for having us. Um, did not have the intention of coming to speak tonight, but my daughter wanted to speak. Uh, wanted to build up the braveness and was just kind of hammering me just now to speak. Um, I originally came here with the intention of the swim team to kind of find out what we could do on behalf of getting a pool for them. And based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's a wonderful community idea, wonderful need. I've heard a gentleman speak, he's right. Some short sightedness, um, may not benefit, be beneficial to us. But in a community like this, people have made points that I won't just say again, that a pool is health benefits, economic benefits. If we try to incentivize it, a town that is growing, that can use it, it does have a lot of needs. The swim team, like we said, we're trying to build a better community. We're starting for, with our children there, building them up for school, for swimming, swimming scholarships, opportunities like that. I do think, uh, a pool would be beneficial in that sense. It would be beneficial as well to alleviate the stress that we've heard on the older pool. So again, I thank you guys for, you know, considering this idea. I've heard your concern about wanting to take care of your constituents and what they want. As somebody who's traveled a little bit, as I'm sure we all have, we've seen cities starting to fall into disrepair, and that is a tough job you guys have to deal with. But part of the concern that we have in our community is making sure we have up to date facilities there and then maintaining them. And in a case like this, we've heard the concern of the pool being outdated, crowded and things like that. So while it's a tough decision, I do think it is an easy decision to build something that will help the next generation and the generations after be able to achieve better, bigger and better things than we have, which is the goal of what I think the swim team wanted to do here originally. And, uh, again, I will thank you for your time and, uh, thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, city council, go pool. Um, I am curious about, one, the process, how the whole process is supposed to go. So if the city council gives the city manager direction, then is the city manager just supposed to wait for the city council to give him more direction? Or was the city staff supposed to do something else in that process? And, um, as, as far as the second pool goes, the ci, the city really needs it. Uh, we needed a skate park a long time ago for our skater kids that enjoy going roller skating. And apparently people really thought they needed that. Well, we have a bunch of children who really need to swim, not just the children, but adults really need to swim too, as the people have pointed out that, um, their grandfather, you know, and other adults need to be able to go and ac- access the pool. Your aquatic center is too small and it does need expanding. Our city is growing. You are projecting to be a hundred thousand people. We have had a horrible week, by the way. And, um, driving around town with a hundred thousand people, at least it feels like a hundred thousand people downtown this last week. And I really happen to believe that the process, I don't under, like I said, I don't understand the process. The whole process would be really good because obviously, as, uh, the city manager has said, he's not going to be able to just break ground tomorrow. And that's why you guys gave him direction last year to start the process, but it, the process did not start. And I was wondering how the process works.
I explained it earlier, Ms. Toy, they, the city council gave staff direction and a direction to move, but we did not give them the money to do anything. And so had the ability to, all the discussions that we're having and have been having, been able to be figured out, the location, partners, size, are the, uh, the things that were there. We've gotten conflicting things even this evening about those three items. Uh, one of us could have brought an item forward to reallocate the budget, move something that's in the CIP budget for this year to next year and move up the bu, the, the budget for next year. So that's, that's what occurred.
Would, would that have occurred during a city council meeting?
It did occur during a city council.
Okay, so during, before, up until, was it November, when they changed the way things were put onto the city council agenda? Until that moment in time, you had to have a third person or they had to ask you to put things on the agenda. Now they can only need a second person to ask to put that on the agenda and they don't need the third person. I would think that having that information in front of them, unless they thought they were needed to ask you. A couple of the council members have been, um, not, there's a lot of council members who I've, you know, they don't bring things up during the meeting to say, hey, I want this as a future discussion item. And so that never gets seconded or third, and now it gets to get seconded again. But, um, the whole process was confusing that way, all the way up until you guys recently changed that. And, um, I don't see how they, anyone on council would have just been able to go, oh, hey, let's have this open discussion in a meeting at all. So at what point in time does the city manager go back to the council and say, we need to discuss this during a meeting?
Is that your comments?
That was my question.
Okay, I'm, I'm taking feedback right now, Ms. Toy. We already explained the process, uh, to you. I'm, I don't know how else to answer that for you. So thank you for your feedback. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Victoria Reeves. I am a community member. I am, um, also with the stingrays, but that is not the primary reason I'm here. Um, I understand your concerns, absolutely. I drive on these roads, they make me crazy. Um, the same time, this community is growing. We are growing by leaps and bounds with young families. We're growing with, and our elderly community is growing. Um, as Gabby pointed out, there were, our, our, the list of reasons to expand our current facility is endless. Um, I love our parks. I use our parks with my own children. Um, we have eighteen, I believe. We have one pool. We have a lake that people cannot really learn to swim in. Um, we need to be able to use our pool for our first responders. Um, we share our pool right now with our first responders and it's not efficient. It's not efficient for our swim teams, not just the stingrays, but our high school team, which is a youth sport. We talk about youth sports. We talk about baseball and soccer. Um, high school swim is a youth sport. Children can go into college, they can go into the military. We have, um, several kids on our team that are also lifeguards that are flowing into the Navy. One who hopes to be a Navy SEAL. Uh, I mean, the future for this pool is endless. Um, we were talking about like parks and recs not being a priority. I think it needs to be a priority. It has to be a priority for this community. It cannot not be a priority for this community. Um, it's the future. Our kids are the future. And if we don't take care of them, this city does not have a future. Uh, I have a couple of questions and I don't know if, if we, um, is there a timeframe where the budget that was allocated for this pool must be used? So do we have, because I know it's the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. If it's not used, I mean, is there a, I, I don't know if I'm asking the right question. I also own, I own a construction company, I'm a woman owned small business. And so I understand, you know, the RFPs, I understand those processes and they are time consuming. The fact that we sat on this for ten months and it just kind of went stagnant is disheartening a bit. Um, but I wanted to ask about that allocated budget and if there is a timeframe in which it must be used.
Yeah, so it's currently approved in our five year CIP. We're in the process, uh, of going through our budget process, uh, for the next year, which would move it from year two to year one, i- if that's the will of the council at that time. Uh, once that, uh, is approved, if we, we would start the project in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, and if it was not completed, the, we could, we'll roll the forward, the funds forward. So, um, if, uh, but the, the process will be determined on where it's going to be, the cost, all of those things. And we also, we didn't wait ten months. I mean, we, we did not give the city staff any money to do anything, so.
Someone said ten months, so.
No, no, it's correct. I just want to make sure we didn't sit on this. It's, uh, it almost coming across as something nefarious happened, like someone didn't do their job, and that's just not the case.
Right, no. I know we have been talking about it, you have, you're like, here, she's here again.
No, I love it, this is great. We're, we're doing great things. The other, the other point is, we have a five year CIP. The, the pool got on to year two, the, during the.
Really rapidly.
Really quickly, based on community and, and civic, um, engagement. It doesn't generally happen that fast. And so I just want to put some perspective into, to where we're at.
Yeah.
So everyone understands that it is moving very quickly.
My other question, I know I'm running out of time, is if we find that as we move forward with this RFP and design, that the project is underfunded, uh, can additional fiscal year budgets be added to that?
Yes, through council action. So the, it'll come before the city council and we would be able to.
I mean, pools are expensive.
Yes, they are.
You know, we're not building a backyard pool and those are expensive, so.
Yeah, so to put it in perspective, the building we're all sitting in right now, this pool is one quarter of the cost to, to renovate this entire facility and buy it. So that puts that in perspective, one pool at twenty-five by twenty-five.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at this time?
Uh, Rick Wheeler, head coach for the Havasu Stingrays, uh, mayor, vice mayor, council members. I wasn't going to talk tonight, I was just going to sit and watch. Uh, but I want to thank you guys for the work and everything you guys have done on this. I do hope that we do continue working on this because I do think it's very important. I want to thank everybody who came tonight in support of the new pool. Um, the very first meeting, I know some of you were on council at that time, but the very first meeting I sat up and I came up and talked, it wasn't about my passion for coaching swimming team. It was about passion for saving people's lives or learn to swim program. And I'm still a licensed per, um, licensed instructor for that. That is where my passion is, saving people's lives. So I want you all to just to understand, it's not about my, the stingray swim team. This is about the community and what we can do for our elderly folks, what we can do for everybody. Okay, we get a benefit, we're going to benefit to use the pool, absolutely. I'm already spinning and trying to think of other ways that we can give back, uh, for lessons and things like that with working with, with Gabby in the future, of helping everybody. And that's all I got to say. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Rick, can I ask you a question? So we've, you brought a lot of people here and there's been some mixed messaging from the people from the audience. That twenty-five is okay. I'm not even going to pretend to get, know if it's meters or yards. But, uh, but then I hear from other people that fit absolutely not fifty, it has to be fifty. Well, then if it has to be fifty, you are essentially doubling the cost. That doesn't necessarily fit in the budget that it was jammed into. Uh, probably more than doubles, right?
Yeah.
And then it doesn't necessarily fit on the site. Right? Am I correct?
It doesn't fit on the site.
It doesn't fit on the site. So now we got to go find another site. So all of those conversa, you see how things might not, you, it might appear that things are stalled because we might be getting differing information from differing people of what really is the need? And so we're dr- really trying to drill down and see what we need so that we can get it right the first time. Because I'm kind of with you. If, if a twenty-five by twenty-five isn't going to work, then I don't want to build it. And we'll, we'll wait till we, we can afford it and get what we really need. But I think you guys need to decide that as a community. Because to be honest, your messaging is over here and over here. And so I'm, I don't, I don't really, I'm, I'm now more confused of whether or not we should do this or not after all of the testimony, if I'm completely honest. And so maybe get together, maybe say, no, 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 we want, we want it now, we're okay to wait. But I say get together and, and get that messaging, uh, cohesive.
Yeah, and I agree a hundred percent on that. I don't know who we're supposed to get together with in that sense. We've, we did have.
Users.
We did, we, well, we have, I mean, the whole community has. We did have a meeting, again, that I had mentioned last week. We had a meeting in October with the head coach for the high school team. We had a meeting with Gabby, Guy Reynolds, Swan, Matt, we're all in that meeting and we all kind of threw out a whole bunch of ideas. That is when Guy had basically said it was going to be about double the price. And I knew that because I already went and, and shopped around for a fifty meter pool. And I also had mentioned that a fifty meter, or a, sorry, a twenty-five yard pool is just going to be a Band-Aid. And that's why I originally started when, after the meeting we had in October. And before that, even in June, I started talking to businesses in town to try to see if we, I could try to get some, some movement in the sense of people that wanted to come onboard and help us, help you guys, to get some more money in that, you know, to where we could use possibly a fifty meter pool. After that meeting in October, I didn't really hear anything from anybody. And I followed up a few times, but I still didn't hear anything. So I'm not sure where you want me to go talk to, when I guess I could have went to you guys and I didn't know that, so that was my fault on that?
It's not us, I, the, the users, the, the, the people, everyone that here, we need to come to a consensus about what we want and what we need. And if it's a fifty, whatever, um, then we need to start planning accordingly. Um, the notion that we haven't done anything, we, I've, I've, I've had a lot of conversations with different people, including you, um, including some of my friends at the school. Um, just, we haven't come to consensus. That's really, that's really the stall. Is this going to work or not? What we, what we've currently, before you guys started talking, we're like, yeah, let's do it, let's do it now. We said it a year ago too. Yeah, next July, when we start, we want to start building that as soon as possible.
Okay, so what, what I'm gathering is you want us to go ahead and all get a bunch of people together, come up with a, a dream plan for you guys and then present it and then give it to you guys? What you want, I mean, that's.
No, I, I just think the, the users have to come together. So it's, it's a difficult situation. So we had the, the pool and the discussion last year was twenty-five by twenty-five. That's what was put in the budget. After the budget was approved, then it was, no, it needs to be fifty. So then we went and did the work to say, well, what does fifty look like? We got the pricing for it, we looked at the side, the site of the aquatic center, realized it wasn't big enough, we'd have to move utility, uh, pieces. Uh, we then started talking about partnerships. An October meeting happened. Like, none of that was brought up today. It was just that you guys are doing nothing and look at us, uh, um, you know, talking about a pool and, and doing nothing for us. We've done a lot of work on this. And then we, we come here and, and twenty-five by twenty-five is okay with some, it's not okay for others. Um, you've even heard from some of my colleagues, some people don't care about the competitive swim team side of it, but they want it for the water recreation side of it, or, or potentially are open to that. So there's multiple users for everything we have, uh, whether we're talking aquatics or we're talking parks or we're talking bocce ball or pickleball, it doesn't matter, there's lots of users doing different things with it. So we just have to find something we can be proud of. So, I mean, tonight was the first time I heard that we might want to be an all-star, uh, swim destination that people are going to come. I never have heard that before tonight. Um, and so, no, no, I'm not dismissing it at all, but i- if that's what we want as a community, then how do we get there and how do we put the money in place to do that? So, I mean, you go and, and get your users together and say, yeah, we want to, uh, we wanted this and this is our dream facility and it's fifteen million dollars, then it just stalls again, and it's not going to happen at all. Then it just stalls again. It's not going to happen at all. So, so do we look at, um, doing, um, a, a, a fix that is five years? I heard someone say a five, seven year fix, 25 by 25, while planning for the future for, um, some other partnership that might come together that we have a larger, uh, swim, dive facility. I was sort of dive for the first time tonight, uh, is a possibility that would be good for, for youth in this community. So, I mean, those are the things. If, if we're going to spend two and a half million dollars, again, it's one quarter of what we spent for the, the purchase of this building and the renovation of this building. It's one quarter for 125 by 25. Well, just to put it in perspective of, of taxpayer funds. What is it? We want to make sure we're not spending it, um, in a way that is not going to make the users happy or work for the users that are going to use it. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Diaz.
Yeah. Um, you know what I, what I'm hearing tonight from, from both sides of the, of the diet, uh, the people of the audience and the council members. I think it could all be solved by, uh, people communicating properly. I don't, I don't think we're communicating properly. We're not doing ourselves justice. We're not doing citizens justice. Everyone's having side meetings and other people say, I'm really engaged with this. Other people say, I haven't heard anything. If we could just all get on the same table and get it out there where everyone's been talking about, so there's no surprises. I'm, I'm hearing some things tonight too. That's the first time I've heard them. We just all need to be talking together so that when we do come to a consensus, like, like, like the council manager Moses says, maybe we're doing the right thing. And, and for the community is not just a Band-Aid, but we all have to communicate. Everyone's having side meetings and side meetings, uh, conversations. I talked to this person and you talked to that person. And that does no injustice. It makes everyone look like we're running around with like a bunch of chickens without our heads on. And I hate to be that crude about it, but that's what it seems like, that we don't know what we're, what we're doing. When staff, we're not giving staff direction, staff's not following direction. This is the perceptions that's out there because we don't know what we're doing. We have to get on the same page and we have to make sure that we're all talking about a 50 meter pool, a 25 meter pool. Do we want it here? Do we want it there? Is the school board going to be involved? Are other entities are going to be involved? Are we going to get businesses to help sponsor this thing? Whatever. But until we all get on the same page and the left hand, those are the right hands doing, it's going to look like this every time and everyone's, everyone's going to be all frustrated. And I hate to be frustrated and I know everyone up there hates to be frustrated as well, as, as long as, as well as the citizen. So that, that's my two cents.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. And not to put words in Vice Mayor Lynn's, uh, mouth, but I think that's why you wanted to have this hearing. So we all could be on the same page, have this conversation, make sure that all of the components were out there so that we knew when we were going forward that, that one, that the council knows what it is we're doing, the, the city team knows what they're doing, uh, in response to the council's action. Um, and that we're serving our citizens because that's what we're here to do. So, uh, within the confines of a budget. And so how, how do we make all that, uh, come together? So, all right. Perfect. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right. Seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council. So, uh, from the discussion that we had tonight, we have a few things to do. We have, uh, to give direction to, uh, the city, uh, staff about where we want to go. So I, I think, uh, if we can take this in small bites, one, um, let's, let's have a discussion. Do we want to pursue the idea of a second pool? If that's, let's start there. Um, and then we can also take some time, uh, we, because of, of the timing of how this hearing happened, we'll be back together in two days, talking about the budget in whole. And we can take a look at it and, and talk more specifics about, um, once we've digested all of the information, the size and the location. So, um, is the, is the council good with moving forward with the second pool?
Mayor, can I just ask, where did these numbers come from? I, I have yet to hear, was this a 50 meter, 20? It says, we have a 395,420. Put on our, when you get your CIP book on Tuesday, I mean, Thursday, you're going to look exactly what I'm seeing. That for the next five years, we have budgeted, I guess, or thought that that's what the pool was going to cost, 395,420. Can somebody tell me where that number came from and for what kind of pool and where was it?
Mayor.
Mr. Congressman.
Councilmember Campbell. So you're looking at, at the, uh, the CIP sheet that identifies, um, individually the projects throughout. We want to make sure that certain that when we identify a CIP project, even though these are one-time dollars going towards a one-time project, that in some cases there, there are, there's going to be ongoing maintenance costs associated with that. So, um, staff wants to make sure council is fully informed that the cost of the pool is more than just the, the initial cost for that one-year period of the pool. Um, there's going to be some ongoing costs associated with that. So that, so that's what you're seeing there. In terms of the dollars that are been identified for, um, um, for the pool and the 2.5 million dollar budget, uh, we've, we've had lots of conversations. So, um, and, and we have paperwork and, and submittals that we've been working on for several months. And that identify the, the cost of a 25 meter by 25 yard pool to be right about 2.5 million dollars. We're digging a little bit deeper into that number. So maybe a 200, um, $200,000 in terms of design. And, and then, uh, the cost of the construction of the pool. So that's what we're looking at.
So you're saying that 395,420 is what you're guessing, uh, 25 by 25 meter pool on our property would be. Somebody's actually crunched the numbers and came up with that. Now my next question, before we move forward with having my decision, can I get a raise of hands here? How many people think that it should be 50? How many people think it should be 25? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Congressman.
Mayor, uh, and the council member Campbell, to, to your point, just so the council has all the information that, that's out there, the research that the staff's done the last several months, identifies a 50 meter pool, uh, will be about six, between six and six and a half million dollars. So the footprint for a 25 meter pool fits nicely in that area. If we want to do something, uh, bigger and look at that 50 meter pool, uh, it would, we were, we're tearing down some of the walls and, and we're, and we're encroaching into the, the parking lot, which is, uh, the, the front part of the aquatic center. So we can do it. It's, uh, we're, we're just kind of breaking at the seams a little bit. And there'll be some sacrifices to a smaller extent in terms of parking stalls and all the rest. Just so council has that information, public has that information, uh, some of our, our initial, uh, due diligence shows that's about six to six and a half million dollars for a 50 meter pool.
And encroaching on the parking lot that also needs maintenance as well. Thank you.
Well, and we'd have to figure out what to take out of the CIP budget to make it work. I mean, we, we do balanced budgets. We don't get to print money, um, like the federal government does. So you know what I mean? That's a huge jump from two and two and a half to six and a half.
So how many people, I would like to know my constituents. Do you, are you willing to jump in with the 50? I mean, I'm listening, just, I'm always listening to everybody. I always, I can change my mind. So where are we at on that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not prepared to answer that question until we have our budget work session on Thursday. It's part of a bigger picture. So it more literally tripling the budget, uh, we weren't able to get the money that's there, move forward into this current fiscal year to start the design last year. So again, it has to be a balanced budget. We don't get to, to spend more than we have funds identified for. Uh, so I just can't answer that question now. I mean, we'll do, uh, by show of hands again, if, uh, if doing a 50 by, uh, 50 or the 50 versus the 25, meanings it can't get done for several years, do you want to continue to move forward with the 25 by show of hands? Okay. And then if, wait, wait several years to, to do it for where it's 50, show of hands. All right. So, yeah. Okay. All right. So do, it seems like we have consensus to continue to explore the second pool idea. Is that, is that the, the case? Okay. Councilmember Diaz, you're, you're on board with that?
I, I couldn't see the show of the hands. What, what, what was the outcome of the show of hands? I'm sorry.
It is, is, is about split, uh, for, for that.
Okay. They're up 50. Okay.
There was only one person that said they wanted the 25. The rest of the audience, everybody else, was there more than one? I'm just saying that there was, when the first question that I asked, it was, um, almost the whole place said they wanted the 50 foot, uh, I, 50 meter. I only saw, um, council member Diaz, one to two people raised their hands that said they're okay with just the 25. That's, that's what I visual, that's what I saw.
Hey, thank you.
Just, just for a point of discussion, I mean, we've, we've been talking about this being a community pool and we have a need for a community, for a community pool. And the 25 by 25 does fit a lot of those. It fits pretty much every need. It's just not ideal for the, for the swim team. But like we said too, we're not building a pool for the swim team. The goal is to accomplish both. Um, you know, so I think that, that is the thing with the 25 by 25. It accomplishes a lot of what we as a city needs and not just the swimmers, but for, for everybody, you know? And I think that's, that's where I'm a little frustrated is feels like we, you know, we're on budget with the two and a half. And this is, we were going to build for two and a half and we were going to build a community pool. And, and I guess that's my question too, is maybe can the, the coach come up and, can you guys like, what are the limitations using a 25? I mean, can you guys still do meets and still do stuff? I mean, I, I understand, like I, I love going to the full upgraded model as quickly as I can too, but you know, I could probably get, get away using a, you know, an F-150 instead of a $100,000 Hummer or something like that, you know? So I guess, can you give us a little information on how would the 25 by 25? Is it something that can be used? Is it, you can still have it meets?
Basically what happens when you have a 50 meter pool, you can run a, basically all the championship meets that you wanted to run. You can run, so we have two seasons throughout the year. We have a short course season. We have a long course season. You have, uh, regional championships. You have state championships for 14 and under, 15 and over. Then you have regionals for all of those age groups for each one of those. So you have about six to eight championships meets that you could run with a 50 meter pool. Is a 25 meter 10, 10 lane, I'm just going to say 10 lane, whatever. I don't know what the dimensions are that, a 25, yes. You can run a short course championship meet all day long, um, throughout the year. So am I going to put my foot in my mouth? Probably. Am I realistic? Yes. And like you said, it's about the community pool. A 50 meter pool would also be able to, as the town keeps growing, you're going to run out like what we, uh, I went to a meeting here and they talked about the, the soccer pitches. They started with this and now you guys need more. So you're just going to outgrow it. So now, yes, it would work for about 10, 15 years. If you do a 50 meter pool now, you're going to last for 40, 50 years. You're not going to have to redo another pool because you've got, when you do a 50, uh, 50 meter pool, you have eight lanes going 50 meters. You turn that thing sideways. You've got 24 lanes going one direction. So you could have the stingrays, the high school team and lap swim all at the same time throughout the day, all day long. You open up the inside. So there's benefits to both sides that I have seen throughout everywhere. It's just again, where are we in what we really want to do? We want to wait 10 years to have this approved and all of that? Or do we want to have it in the next couple of years to get started?
I appreciate the insight. Yeah. And I think that's, that's my concern just for the council too, is we, you know, we could wait five to 10 years for this 50 meter pool that we may never get. And for constituent wise, two and a half million for a pool that fits into our aquatic center, can be used right away, teaching kids to swim, fits so many of our needs. I think is very realistic and I'm on board and I can sell that to the community as well. Waiting or not even waiting, but I mean, if you know, it's great. If somebody wants to show up and have three and a half to $4 million and add this to our amount, I think that's great. Or, you know, the school district wants to give us three and a half, $4 million and we put it on their site. I'm on board right now. But, um, you know, like I said, I think that's just my concern is I, 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 I would love the 50 meter pool. I just don't think it's realistic and the community is going to support it at that point because it does seem like it is more for a swimming Mecca and a swimming, and it would be great. But I think the 25 by 25 is something that we can use right now and it fills the need for the next five to 10 years. And, you know, so that's just my thoughts. So thank you though.
And probably 10 years from now, that 25 yard pool, you're going to have to build again. It's probably going to be double the cost if you just do it all at one time. That, you also got to look at that too, what it's going to cost in 15 years to build another just 25 yard pool. Where you could just, again, I, I make it sound like that, but if you just had, you know, we had the money now to do it, you get it done. And then you don't have to worry about that again. Although again, like, uh, operating costs, a little bit more obviously too.
Vice Mayor Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, um, I appreciate everybody's comments. Um, I just want to remind everyone, this pool is not for the stingrays. There's going to, there's a, even though that's a majority of the people in this room and no offense, but that's the majority of the people in this room. So raising hands here and here, when we have people at home and other people that couldn't be here tonight, I do not think this is a good judgment of what kind of pool we should build. The majority of people here are from the stingrays. They want a 50 thing pool. There are people in the community that have kids and elderly that want that pool too, that couldn't be here tonight at 8:30 at night to say the 25 pool would be fine. So with that being said, I do have another question. Um, I remember asking our former Parks and Rec director on, um, the personnel. So I think I would like a little bit clarification on that number. I remember asking, are we going to have to hire more staff? And I believe the answer was maybe one lifeguard. And I, I don't want to pull back the meeting or anything, but where is that 235,420 coming from? For a second pool for personnel? Where's that number coming from?
Mr. Congressman. Or excuse me, uh, Mayor Sheehy, uh, Vice Mayor Lynn, um, where's it coming from? If there's any funding for, uh, the ongoing maintenance of the pool, including personnel, it would come from the general fund. We'd have to go through the, the budget process, which is ultimately approved by the city council.
Right. That's not my question. My question is where did that number come from? Because I remember asking and they've, and our former Parks and Rec director said, the only staff we would need is maybe an additional lifeguard and they would use the staff we have. That's a, that's 230, is it? Is our new lifeguard going to be $235,000? Uh, where did that number come from?
Mayor Sheehy, um, Vice Mayor Lynn, we've identified the, the costs, especially with, with the pool. We, we've discussed that and identified the numbers. Uh, we shared some of the, the breakdown that, uh, Ms. Vera identified with that second, uh, second slide, uh, of, uh, where some of these costs are associated with. So this is, um, chemicals. Uh, this is additional, um, unisource bill, uh, in terms of, uh, power. What we're looking for in, in the CIP has been, uh, has been taken to the next level by Ms. Vera and, and, and the parks team. And that, and we've, we'll share that again with, uh, um, with the council on, on Thursday. If, uh, if that's, we will do that no matter what. That'll, that'll take place with, with the costs are there. As far as like, how many lifeguards would it take for the, uh, for the second, uh, for an outdoor pool? What's the use of the pool? So these are things that we need to identify in terms of demand, use hours, availability, all these types of things. Are we going to have, uh, um, that pool utilized for, uh, 10 hours a day, two hours a day? Um, you know, we have a pretty good understanding of what we think it's going to be, but it's going to be our personnel and the cost, the maintenance will be dependent on use.
Okay. Do you, is there any way that we can have a little bit breakdown then for Thursday on what personnel means? Because I'm hearing personnel, maintenance, chemicals, personnel to me is staff. So can we have a breakdown for Thursday's meeting on what that looks like? Cause I'd like to see what that, because again, I remember one lifeguard was, unless you guys have a different interpretation of personnel is at staff. Is that not staff?
Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Lynn, that's, uh, staff, that's, that's wage, that's, uh, insurance, that's, uh, the all then cost of an employee is more than just the amount that they make.
One lifeguard. I remember the meeting. It was one lifeguard. So can we just get what that would look like on Thursday? Cause that would help me.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any additional discussion on this item? All right. Uh, thank you all for joining us, uh, for this item. Uh, we'll be here on, uh, Thursday at nine AM as well. For the record, council member Diaz had to, uh, get off of the call. So if we could just make that note. Number eight on our agenda is a call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on items that are within our jurisdiction that are not on the agenda. Uh, your comments are limited to three minutes. There'll be a light indicator, uh, or actually a scroll on the television around the room with the amount of time you have left. You don't have to sign up. We didn't have anyone sign up, but if you'd like to address the city council on anything, feel free to make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Nicole Thomas. I am a small business owner. I'm also a dog trainer here in town. And I have come to the realization that our channel does not have any signage or verbiage saying, please keep your dogs on leashes. We have a problem with that. Um, we have a problem with people letting their dogs off very far and not cleaning up after their dogs. We have no cleanup stations. We have no signage anywhere on our parks at all in our cities. We actually have two signs, one at, other than Rotary Park and like the baseball fields. If you go to Jack Hardy Park, there's one sign on the other side, not the big side where everybody lets their dogs off. And the channel, zero. I'm a dog trainer that works with shelter dogs that could be reactive. I'm helping people. Just because our dogs are a bit on the reactive side or fearful side, doesn't mean that we can't enjoy the park just along with everybody else. And we normally hear this, don't worry, mine's friendly. Mine's not. I am down there all the time. It is a waste of law enforcement and animal control to constantly coming back down there. And I hear it all the time. There's no signs. This is Arizona. We're not the Wild West. We have laws. It would be a lot more, I guess, I think the, the arguments of people down there, and I think our law enforcement could do other things in our city other than come down and patrol the people who are constantly knowing that their dogs should be on leash down at the channel. And then not picking up after their dogs. And it's unfortunate and it's, it's a disease issue. It's, um, a lack of just honestly common courtesy for other people. I train all my dogs. You'll see them out there. You'll see my clients with long leads. I tell, I don't take, train anybody for off-leash because nobody has off-leash dogs, period. So, um, that is my only thing is I've asked, um, I went to Parks and Rec and asked if there could be signage. So that is my only thing is I've asked, I went to Parks and Rec and asked if there could be signage put up. And I was told there is no money in the budget whatsoever to do that. So I think that our law enforcement or animal control could be doing other things than coming down and policing people that should know better. So I was just wondering how I could get that on the agenda to maybe see about putting about 10 little stations around on, on the Rotary side as well. Because dogs are off-leash there too, but it's really a problem down on the channel, big time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right. We'll close the call to the public. Item nine, are there any council committee reports? Item 10, our future meetings. Again, our next meeting is this Thursday, April 10th, 2025 at 9:00 AM. It's our budget and our CIP overview work session. And then our next regular meeting is on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? All right. So we are adjourned. Thanks for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.